Notice and amended agenda was posted in the government center building in two places, posted on the county website on October 8th, 2021, and was published in a legal newspaper the week of October 11th, 2021. In addition, on Friday, October 8th, 2021, at 2:33 PM, the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting and amended agenda to supervisors via media via email or mail. Notice of second amended agenda was posted in the government center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting with any additional proposed resolutions were distributed to the supervisors and media via email or mail on Wednesday, October 13th, 2021.
Proper notice, is Malia on? Is Joe or Malia out there?
I'm here. Chair Nelson, can you hear me?
Can.
Yes, it is proper notice.
Do vocal?
Brad Olson.
Hi, he's gonna be late.
Doug Brody.
Here.
Steve Warndell.
Here.
Nelson. Tracy LeBlanc. Dan Ruck. Mike Pritchard.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
O'Connell.
Here.
Lee Middleton. Jay Luke. Grant Dunkinson. Russ Arkand. Don Bonner Price.
Here.
Joe Dumbling.
Here.
Thirteen of the fifteen here now.
And I believe Mr. Ruck was actually, did say he was gonna be excused tonight.
He mentioned he was not gonna be here the week of the agenda meeting.
He did tell me that. Hey, John, you wanna at least pledge allegiance?
Uh, our trail guru, Mr. Rowdy, what do you mean? Trail guru, he's done a lot.
I pledge allegiance to the United States to a greater than to the United States of America. We're just friends, my nation, and if this law is ever to be changed, Mr. Ruck. Chair.
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jay Luke for board chair. And I have an opinion here from Attorney General's office.
So let me, hold on before you do that. Uh, Malia, would that be proper at this item as number five? Should we wait till we get the approval of the agenda or?
No, it's not on the agenda, so they said it can be done at any time.
Well, let me, we have Corporation Counsel, let me just make sure.
I thought she was gonna be here.
Sure. Malia, you got an opinion on Mr. Rowdy, is this a motion?
It's a motion to nominate Jay Luke for board chair.
Gotcha.
It's a vote.
Malia?
Well, it hasn't been, it hasn't been presented on the agenda. And what I heard Supervisor Rowdy say was that he has an opinion from something and I didn't cut out.
You wanna tell Malia what you got going on?
I, the Attorney General's office has been contacted about the two-thirds vote. He says that's not valid because we're only voting to create a new board chair. And it's, I got five pages of his email.
Okay.
I was thinking you'd be here so you could read it and see it.
Sure, I apologize Supervisor Rowdy, I'm recovering from a surgery, so I'm appearing remotely. I haven't reviewed anything that you have there. If you could please forward that to me, I'd be happy to do that. Having said that, a couple of things come to mind. Um, if, if the opinion is about whether or not it would need a two-thirds majority, that is a completely separate issue than whether or not it would be appropriate to even have something like that brought up and then voted on tonight because there was nothing posted, there's no public notice. This is the first I'm even hearing that this is a possibility. Um, so I believe at this point it would be improper because it would be a violation of the open meetings law. Now, having said that, if you forward that to me and it's something that you would like on a future agenda, um, it's certainly something I'd be more than willing to look at.
Attorney General's opinion is it doesn't have to wait for another month. And that's right in the, I read that in the statutes. And it only takes a simple majority because we're voting a new, or a new board chair, not removal of the board chair.
Okay, well, I'm taking you at your word that whatever documents you have say what they say. It is my opinion right now based upon the information that I have that it would be a violation of the open meetings law to have a vote like that on the floor when no one from the public would have been given any notice that something as major as that which would have the effect of changing the current county board chair. And it hasn't been noticed and no public has been apprised of that. Again, forward all of that to me, I would think something as important as that would have been forwarded to, to my office ahead of time and not just hoping that I would be there in person and that we could take a recess so that I could review all the information that you have. So my best answer right now is that it would violate the open meetings law to go forward. If you are asking then the chair to rule on whether or not you are calling a point of order, that would be the only way you could overrule my recommendation to the chair that your request right now would be out of order.
I think.
We're gonna, you know, let's just, if that's what you guys wanna propose, put it on the agenda next month, get that to Malia.
And I will.
Yeah, I have no problem.
But that's not the way that this explained to me, but that's fine, we'll do it that way.
Supervisor Luke?
Total surprise.
Sure.
Certainly like to have some time to consult about this.
Sure.
Be interesting, but I have, why, I, yeah. This point, for sure, I mean, that's for some reason. I, I would like to know, I'd like to know something far about.
Exactly, we just didn't have time.
You know?
Pardon?
You know what I mean?
Yeah, it's just, this all came together basically yesterday and today.
Yeah, I think it would be proper that if you have an idea that one, I would think, and I'll just, not sure exactly, you wanna make sure we don't have a walking forum and you're not discussing with other supervisors. And I think you would go directly to Supervisor Luke if that's, you think he wants the chair or you wanna make a change. I think you would wanna give him the respect that, talk to him before tonight. So you got a month now to make sure that he wants to do it. Yeah.
Doesn't, only one, no, someone else.
Yeah. Ah, hey, it's a fun job, Jay.
That's right.
Maybe Doug, you wanna do it?
Well, that's it.
Okay. All right, so, uh, so for the record, it's, it's documented. Malia made her comments, and do I move on then to the agenda?
Then go on next.
Yeah, well, yes, well, I guess that's Corporation Counsel and Doug. They can work out how something like that gets on the agenda, the proper way to do it.
Got it, all right here.
Yeah. Okay, um, number five. Closure of Board Members' Conflicts of Interest, you'll bring it up at the time. We have a motion to approve the agenda as written, at the amended agenda.
I motion to approve the amended agenda as presented.
Second, any discussion about that? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Propose, carry. Number seven, matters offered for adoption on consent agenda, we have a motion? Supervisor O'Connell, second, Supervisor Olson. Is there any discussion? See, not all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Carry. Public comments?
Have any?
No one's making public comments?
Fails. Are you asking for public comment?
Yes, yeah, we're ready for public comments. Please state your name and the town you're from or the area you're from.
My name is Beth Wood. I reside in St. Craig County on Cedar Lake, half of which is located in Polk County. I am the environmental advocate of the Star Prairie Land Preservation Trust, which holds over 500 acres of property in conservation easements, a majority of which are in Polk County. I have appeared numerous times before this board, not as a protester or as an environmental wacko, but as a steward of our land and water. As a land trust, we are legally bound to uphold the intentions of the landowners that have entrusted us with the protection and conservation of their lands. As a county board, you are entrusted by the taxpayers with the protection of our land and water. We have the same mission, to ensure the preservation of our land and water for future generations. We all must do what we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Buehle from West Sweden. Uh, I sat through most of the Environmental Services Committee meeting of late where the trail consulting firm made their initial presentation and questions and comments were aired by various county board members. I recognize those comments were not a vote on an action, but the tenor of the comments I heard led me to some general conclusions, among which is that the Gandy Dancer Corridor is a prime target to be converted for additional uses. I believe that the Gandy is a fine trail, not perfect, but adequate for hiking, biking, dog walking, snowmobiling, et cetera. But to add motorized vehicles in non-winter months and horses would be forcing incompatible users together. And I would say would make it miserable experience for all. If making people equally miserable is, is the solution, I would reject that out of hand. I can't imagine a place, a four-place UTV to be compatible with a young bike rider or horse. The other comment I had is, I saw, heard a lot of lip service paid to tourism dollars as if tourism dollars from one group were more valuable than tourism dollars from another group. Very inconsistent. In the case of CAFOs, the board wants to cede to the DNR, cede control. Um, to this, I would say if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. And giving a green light to CAFOs is not protecting the public. I spent 45 years making a home for myself and family in this area and I expect to fight for preserving the quality of life here. But in the, so as I say, the case of CAFOs, they wanna hide behind the DNR, but in the case of trails, the board appears to instead be pushing ahead of what the DNR would allow for trail development concerns. I can't quite see, but Supervisor Olson maybe hasn't made it yet. Um, his comments in particular at that meeting were, "We don't need a consultant because all we need is a trail user to take us out and say, 'You would use that, we would use this.'" I, I didn't think you could just order up a trail. And consultants are gonna do the job of getting public comments and see where the tourists might come from and what they might, um, use. And if there are CAFOs on the land, there won't be tourists coming.
Thank you. Next?
Michael Noreen, I'm in Clam Falls, District One. Um, I couldn't help but notice that a, a solution was found for the issue with the Clam Dam. Um, I went to some of the meetings of the organizers who were trying to save the dam and they told me that initially they were told that there was nothing to be done, that the dam could not be saved, that was a DNR issue, and that there were no solutions at the county level. I noticed lately magically a solution was found for this situation. Um, I have to assume that's because this group put pressure on, there were elections that were threatened, and now there's a solution to the Clam Dam issue. The CAFO issue is no different than that. I know Supervisor Nelson wants us to go away. We're not gonna go away because there's a solution to this problem. You're just not willing to look for it. We are asking you to adopt Eureka ordinances to help protect this area. Now, I know industry people have sent, they'll, they'll send their lawyers after you that you'll all get sued if you do something like that. Y'all need to learn how to call a bluff for the sake of your constituents. Call a bluff because they're not gonna sue you. And if they do, bring the fight to them because you care about us. That's your job. And I would also add that farms like mine, small farms, we don't make a ton of money. We certainly don't make enough money to hire lawyers and bring lawsuits of our own. But we have a network of customers who do not want to see us go away. So if CAFOs move into this area, we are not able to do our work, we are gonna have a lot of angry customers who will be willing to help us. So I guess I'm telling you on the board, if you don't face legal action on that end, if you do nothing and we lose our ability to make a living, you will face legal action on our end. So call the bluff on one side, do the right thing. That's what you do when you're in a no-win situation, you do the right thing. Thank you.
Mr. Noreen, if you stay around for Chair's report, I will be addressing actually Eureka's issues. Uh, anyone else?
Hello, my name is Emmeline Kaiser. I'm from East Farmington. Um, I too have sat in front of this group many times, also on the CAFO issue. I also have heard Chairman Nelson's call for us to skedaddle or get out of here or leave this issue alone. And I have to second, um, what my colleague Mike just said. We won't leave this issue alone because it does affect our businesses and our ability to operate. I also am a small farm owner in this area and also have many customers who enjoy our products, um, who would not be able to do so. So that sentiment really hit home with me, so I wanted to second that. Um, I also wanted to kind of second the sentiment of, if you're not a part of the solution, then you are a part of the problem. And I have heard a lot from this group about what, what they can't do and how it's someone else's, i.e. the DNR's problem, or they're, you know, deferred to. And it's like a little confusing because I guess as a constituent, I'm a little sick of hearing about what you can't do and not hearing anything about what you can do as an entity to protect our air and water. Um, so I would encourage a little bit more of the conversation about what we can do because the reality is this group who is very passionate about this issue, if you were to back us and help us fight this, we'll all be on the same side. We'll all be able to help each other to protect the land that we love and the communities that we love. So I just really challenge the board to try and think about what we can do as Polk and Burnett Counties to protect the things that we love about living here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Madeline Shaw and I'm a farm worker near Osceola in Polk County. Um, I've heard that Supervisor Nelson has claimed that there's nothing Polk County can do about a CAFO that's in Burnett County. Um, but I've also heard that in Ashland and Douglas Counties, they have passed ordinances trying to protect their areas from similar polluting factory farms. So to me, it's just not true that there's nothing we can do. Um, and even if you were thinking about it in that terms, like if there is a factory farm in Burnett County and you're thinking it's not gonna come across the county line, I've heard from neighbors who have already been approached by Smithfield trying to buy their land. So these factory hog farms are coming into our county or they're attempting to. Um, and it's gonna be a lot easier for us to try to pass some protective measures before they're already here and established. Um, and I guess I just wanna like address you all, like your people, you're my neighbors, you have families, it's your water too. This isn't just us being a selfish issue and I'm wondering how you're gonna feel 10, 20 years down the line when your grandchildren don't have drinkable water, can't have a livelihood out here, have to go, you know, live somewhere else to make their living and have their family, knowing that you could have done something about this. Um, and I want your jobs to not be stressful. It's gonna be a lot harder for you to manage a county that's dealing with pollution issues, that's dealing with heavy control from agribusinesses. One thing I see about people living out here in this area is people like to have their freedoms. So why do you wanna let a big corporation have control over you when there's things that you could do to have control and autonomy in your community? Um, so I just wanna leave you with that. Thank you for hearing us tonight.
Thank you. Who else?
Anybody?
I could come up.
We got one more person. One more, somebody.
Hello, my name is Dan Winterhalter. I'm from Cushing. And I've looked at the map of supervisors and I find that I'm losing Mike Pritchard, who I have the greatest respect for, and receiving Sharon Kelly, if I understand it properly, who I have the greatest respect for. So I just wanna congratulate you on, on making me happy on that shift. What I like about both of these people are their willingness to look in depth at complicated issues and take action when it's possible. And of course, you've got lots of issues to consider and take action on. But I do remember staying with the Environmental Committee meetings for quite some time and being very impressed with how they operated. But when they passed some agricultural recommendations, uh, the, I was very disappointed with the results, is all I can say. I know I've got, I had and I've got another representative that will listen to the citizens and try to do their best to protect the interests of the citizens of this county and I'm very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
One more.
Hey, my name is Ashley Olson and I'm, I live in East Farmington, Wisconsin. And I wanted to second what everyone's been saying about, uh, just clean water and the future of our water and how available it's gonna be for people. The reality is, is we're like the gateway to some of the last freshwater and pockets where we can actually not have to like filter our water through osmosis or through like having to buy bottled water, which is super wasteful. And the fact that like we can prevent that and be able to like make a decision or choice right now, um, I don't know, it's pretty powerful. Like we got people like generations ahead of us being like thankful that this county in Wisconsin has clean water compared to other counties. Hopefully like other counties can get on board and hopefully if this doesn't spread, you know? Um, but I just wanna second that and that the actuality is we all need water to live. And yeah, good luck in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments?
No.
Any other public comments?
No, there isn't.
Okay, any public comments is closed. We have a presentation on agriculture in Polk County. Uh, tonight we have Kevin Solom, if you don't remember your daughter's name.
Kristen.
Kristen. So like last month again as the chair, um, I put this on the agenda because of the fact that CAFOs is a hot topic, public still keeps wanting to talk about it. Um, I've asked the, I appreciate you guys stepping out in this difficult, challenging times we have with everyone beating up on CAFO people. Uh, we're gonna do another presentation tonight, uh, on a local farmer and tell your story, please.
Oh, they're gonna, they're gonna pull up a, kind of a video of our operation here a little bit. No, we're just gonna talk through it anyway. So, I'm Kevin Sol, Southern Deer Park, Wisconsin. Uh, I'm a fourth generation farmer. My daughter and her husband will be the fifth. Our farm has been in the family since 1893. 1893 was six years after the city of Amory was founded. We have been operating this dairy farm, South Deer Park. Humble beginnings, six cows and eight horses. And, uh, through the years, it's, it's, it's grown. Um, I guess, uh, it's kinda surprised some of the comments here, um, you know, it's, it's, we live all these same things that all these people are concerned about, clean water. I see your vision statement up there, you know, improve the quality of life for all who live in. We live and breathe this every day. We have, um, I would say that we are way better today than we were even just 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 50 years ago especially. Um, I don't know if this is gonna play or not.
You can go ahead and play it. I'll just kinda talk through it.
So, our farm, obviously we wanna do, we wanted to, uh, I just had this dream, that's all I've ever really wanted to do. I don't, um, I don't have to do this. I get to do this. I love what I do. I love my job. I love everything about it. And it all, it all starts with the land. And this, uh, the forage we grow for our cattle. And, uh, here you can see some of the, there's a hay field here you're seeing in front of us and you see in the background those, those layer green fields, that's all, uh, those were cornfields now with the cover crop on them. Uh, this year's been, uh, this fall has been quite rewarding for cover crops because they have absolutely just exploded out of the ground. And I think there may even be some challenges more with them next spring because they're getting so tall already, some of the stuff is eight, 12 inches taller. But, um, so, I could have never dreamed this back when I was in high school that I'd ever be doing anything like this. But it's my passion. I love the dairy cow. She's a tremendous, tremendous resource for this country. Um, you talk, you talk about the cycle of nutrients. Um, you know, every day, um, our, our cows, uh, you can say our cows, uh, uh, you know, every day it's 11 gallons of milk, four pounds of butter. How do you get that? You take 120 pounds of feed that's not consumable for humans, with a bathtub full of water, put it in this cow, and this is what you get. 11 gallons of milk, four pounds of butter. And, um, technology is, is, uh, has changed just immensely here. Um, you know, you can say since electricity, my, my father talked about the day in electricity when in the farm, that was a big deal, pretty big deal. I had a light bulb all of a sudden. And, uh, you know, today here, this is our newer facility here. This is a robotic barn, positive pressure. Uh, these cows, um, I know if you open Uh, these cows, um, I know if you open the door to let them outside, they'd go out there for a little bit, they'd come running back in the barn, they'd much rather be in the barn. On the worst days, uh, most miserable hot days out there, uh, do enjoy working in these barns versus outside, anything outside. As soon as you get into the roofs of these barns, it's just amazing. Here you're seeing, um, we even got a robot to push his feet up. Don't do that anymore. And, and the margins have gotten so thin, why, you know, why do we do this, you know? So next, next Thursday, Tuesday? Next Tuesday, we have a neighbor that's selling his herd of cows. Great farmer. Rod and Tammy have done an outstanding job of farming their whole life there and don't want to take the farm over, 50 cows. So now our township will be known for dairies. And one of them, I, I would say probably just because of his age, I'm saying in 10 years won't be there either. But, uh, anyway, we, we love, uh, we love technology. Every, you know, I'm... I'm just, uh, I'm kind of overwhelmed by some of the comments that, uh, that I heard here earlier. I, I honestly don't know. I'd like to know what's your definition of a CAFO? I'd like, I'd actually like to hear a number tonight from you guys. What should that number be?
Unit.
Unit. That's what it is today. That's what it is today. So, uh, which is roughly 700 dairy cows with no replacements. Animal unit, an animal unit is a thousand pounds of product, a thousand pounds of animal. Our cows weigh about 1,300 pounds, or you can get about 700 cows. I don't know the exact number, but it's about 700. But now, uh, now you got replacements, 700 cow herd, you're, you're, you have your replacements on hand. You're CAFO. And, um, I don't think there's anything wrong with being a CAFO. We have learned... To the universities and, um, and DNR, they have taught us a lot. They've been a great resource. Not only, uh, you know, the one comment was here, uh, one gentleman said he lived, he's lived here for 45 years. I've lived here for 62 years, and my parents before that, my grandparent, my great-grandparent, our water's fine. I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know what, why CAFO would want to ruin your water. That would be, why would I want to do that? It would be, you know, it'd put me out of business and, and everything. And, and I know you seen the aerial shot there, there was a house there, that's where I live. I mean, I live right there on the farm, like my father did, his grandfather, and his father. My daughter and her husband will be moving there in another year or two. I, we've done, we've taken, uh, great measures to protect the environment, and we have had, we've had a CAFO permit since 1999. There's been no, no compliance issues anywhere. We have, uh, the record-keeping we have to do. So maybe you remember, uh, probably growing up as a kid or your grandpa going out and spreading a little manure. In the springtime, and you get stuck, you know, the head, stuff happens. And what'd you do? You unloaded that spreader right there. Well, today, that would be technically a manure spill. You know, thousands and thousands of people have done this over the years on a smaller scale, but CAFO does that with unload. Technically, that's a manure spill. Supposed to report that and clean it up. We don't do that. We're selling our robots that actually work these cows.
I forgot you turned the sound up when I made the video.
So, uh, we've gone from, uh, hey, you people, uh, didn't grow up on a farm, your, your parents fight over, your grandparents probably did, getting so far removed from, uh... Most people really didn't want to milk cows anymore, so they figured out a better way to do it. This is the result. Uh, this is not new technology, it's probably been around for 25 years, especially in Europe. It's gotten a lot more popular here in the United States the last few years. So with this technology has gone, we've got eight of these, 480 cows, and we've got 480 cows there. There's no cabbie in that barn, just managing those cows and taking care of those robots. We've got about 13 and a half man-hours a day in this thing. Plus the feed, which is another hour and a half. So that'd be what, for that, 15 hours a day, 15 man-hours a day. That's not even two full-time equivalent people, 480 cows. And that's not putting feed up or nothing like that, that's just caring for 480 cows. Tremendous efficiency. So we take great pride, I, I encourage any of you who haven't been out to see our place, who've been down for a tour. There's some of the calves, um, looks like they got pretty tough there. But I encourage anybody coming on, we're, we're open any, any, anytime, anytime, just please give us a call. I'd like Kristen to take over here, she's the, she's the future, her and her husband are the future here.
So, um, I've grown up on my family's dairy, um, my entire life, I've never known anything less than 300 cows, um, because before I was born, we lost our tile stall barn to a barn player. And my family was lucky enough at the time to be able to see the future that if we wanted to continue on as a family business, because at the end of the day, this is a family business.
So I don't mean to interrupt, but here you can see, this is our feed pad storage. And here's our leachate containment down here.
Yep. So, um, we have to, per our permit, we have to collect any runoff that runs off of our feed pad. So this pile, this big pile that it's flying over right now, that's our corn silage that we just put up this fall. Um, so after you put up corn silage, it runs every year from the juice, from the corn plants and everything. We collect all those juices, it's in there, everything goes to there and it's collected there. There it's pumped into one of our, uh, American tanks with the manure. So we keep this area very clean, um, because we want everything to flow into our collection pit where it's supposed to go. But we don't want any of that to run off because... We're right next to, next to some grass, so we want it to be collected, we want to do the right thing and collect it and put it in. So these two pits over here, that's where all of our manure from our barns goes, all of our water that we have to collect off of the bunker, um, twice a year, we hire someone to come in and pump that out. So we have a gal, um, that we pay monthly, um, to help us with all of our CAFO bookkeeping, is what it comes down to. Um, Haley helps us write our nutrient management plan. Um, she stays on top of all the regulations, um, because at the end of the day, we have this to take care of. I don't have time. It would take a full-time person for me on my farm to be able to stay on top of everything that she's able to do for me. So we hire her to do that. Um, she writes the whole plan up for us and everything, makes us aware of any changes that are occurring, um, and she's a great asset to our farm. So from there, um, go over to the hay field, so we're able to take those nutrients from the manure pit and apply them to a growing crop. So fertilizer prices right now, anyone who's been paying attention to the markets, they're absolutely terrible and very expensive. This way, we're able to, um, use a form of fertilizer, of nitrogen, that's already there. I don't do anything with it. If you don't do it, it's just going to sit there. So we're able to put it on our growing crops and it helps us, um, produce a very good crop to feed our cows. So these are some pictures, um, you know, why do we do what we do? In the last picture, you saw a little boy, um, he's our neighbor boy. He's with us probably two to three days a month because he loves the farm. Those are my cousin's kids, our dogs go with us everywhere, even with calves. There's that thing, little boy again. Um, he loves coming to the farm and he loves fostering that relationship with him, um, to teach him where his food comes from at the young age of five. So how can we do it? Watch Yellowstone TV show, John Doesn't Say. Um, that's why we do it. It's the only thing I know. Um, going to work every day is not a thing. It's just go outside, there's chores to be done, there's cattle to be taken care of, there's people to be taken care of. It's just what we do and what we absolutely love. We're absolutely blessed to be able to do what our family loves to do. And my husband, he does not come from a farm background at all. Um, he had a lot of friends that he grew up with farming, um, and always going to their houses, helping them to all put up hay, stack hay, mail cows. Tell you, he didn't know what he wanted to do when he was going to go to school, besides he was going to be a mechanic. Um, and he absolutely helps the life of the people. Happy that we're...
Do you want to have any questions?
Any questions? Yep. I think you said you had 480 cows, but do you have enough other animal units to be a CAFO then?
So that's just in the new barn. So it's 480 milking cows in there. Total we have, we milk any given day about 1,240 cows all together.
1,240, okay.
Yeah. And another 100 dry cows.
How many cows do you guys have on your farm?
Well, what's, what's the dry cows? About 13, 50, 13, 40.
Yep, and our replacements are at home, we raise them, um, at home until they're six months of age. And then we have a custom grower that raises them for us.
Go ahead, Steve. Steve?
You talked about your cover crop. Now, do you harvest corn, I assume, and hay, put on the cornfields? Do you put a, plant a cover crop in to come up next year so that the soil is contained and there's no runoff?
Yeah, you see, that's what the, you know, the aerial views there, you can see the cover crops growing in the background. Remember I said it's, it's, they're up eight, uh, eight to 12 inches already this year, which is getting pretty tall for this time of the year. But, uh, we do that on all our corn silage acres. And, you know, there's some challenges with it. Don't, don't get me wrong, there's, uh, that sounds, uh, fields look great. The worms, uh, you can't believe the amount of worms. Plant a cover crop, worms are showing. It's, it's, it's just incredible. We've been doing this about probably close to a dozen years now. We've been, started all a little slow, we were a little skeptical, but... Can see, see the benefits now. It, it, it takes a while, but you, you, you can see some benefits now. It's always trying to have something growing, always something growing on your land, always something growing. That's, that's seems to be the key, always something growing.
I see the small farmers that aren't CAFOs that are just cash croppers are hitting going to that. There'll be a lot of ride planted in the country.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Radishes, wheat, a lot of that stuff going on.
Raise a milk in the end.
Question on the cover crops, how come despite the droughty sort of year we've had, it's growing so good this fall?
Well, we were extremely dry until like right at the end of August. We caught rain just in the nick of time. We were on the absolute cusp of having an absolute huge crop failure here in this county. We were really close, within a week, I'd say. But, um, we've picked up adequate rains, September and out, or, uh, October's been super warm. And, um, and we have gone, I mean, we tried broadcasting this stuff, I mean, there's a million ways to do this, but we have found out that drilling and using a drill actually gets it come up quicker. And some, most years, you need, very limited on time up here. You know, we're going to freeze here, now our growing season's going to end here later this week. And, uh, you know, we started, what, the fifth or so, this year we started planting something like that. It's a pretty short growing season when you, when you look at it, and try to get something established. So we, uh, we also belong to the, uh... Western Wisconsin Water Council. And, um, and we've also, we've also sat in on a horse group one over here. They've done a great job. And there's really some neat ideas that we, and everybody's got a little different take on it. There's no one way that's right, no, and they're not all wrong. You know, there's, that's, um, if anything, the Discovery Farm, Wisconsin Discovery Farm, I don't know if any of you guys have heard of that? You know, when this CAFO thing come around, they were trying to make a rule for the state for everybody. And you, it's, and what the Discovery Farm thought us about that is that it's impossible because every acre's almost different in the state, you know? There's so many different types of soil and not all things work. What works over here, uh, on the, on this side of the state doesn't work necessarily work on the other side of the state, or in the center part of the state. And, um... There's, you know, we've, we've seen guys that are 100% no-till. So here, here's a, here's a deal, uh, no-till's supposed to be a great thing, so now you come, uh, you know, even just a small area, a 100 cow area, come and spread your liquid manure on that, and you, you know, DNRs would want us to fill that in. This guy's 100% no-till on fairly steep ground. And, um, they set up all the collection stuff and it doesn't, doesn't run off. So whatever that guy is doing, that farmer knows his land better than anybody in Madison. Guarantee that.
Everybody's also, you got a question?
I just, Kevin, I want to thank you and your family for being open, so open to anybody whoever wants to tour your farm. I think it's a shame that more people don't. We, uh, in this county and neighboring counties, have a lot of people who apparently read a book or read a story and, and think they know what's going on. And somehow or another, CAFOs are, are a horrible thing is somebody who milks 40 cows and is far from a CAFO and, and never wants to be one. It's, it's really unfortunate that, that people aren't a little more, I'll say, open-minded, willing to learn instead of big is bad. Actually, big is good. There's no, I don't believe, uh, Mango Wood would not be allowed or any other CAFO to run cattle in the waters of Wisconsin. And face it, most small farms, if, if they're dairy farms, if they're beef farms, if they got sheep, drive down the road or drive by a lake, and somewhere, there will be an animal standing in the water, they're going to drink, and, uh, things other than drinking happening. And, and no one's concerned about that. And I think all farms are important. If it's the biggest farm in Wisconsin, if it's the smallest farm in Wisconsin, Wisconsin needs them all.
Totally agree. Absolutely, totally agree. We've had a CAFO permit since 1999. And I'd say in the last 15 years or so, we've had more of these smaller farming operations come into our area. We all get along. It hasn't been a problem. We've got, um, these little, uh, you know, they, they got five acres and they work their tails off on these, on small farms, these small vegetable farms. We're friends with, with some of them and, um, we all get along. Everybody's got a, got a little stake in this thing. But I'd say since we've been CAFO, there's obviously been more of them within a three-mile radius of us. They were never there before.
Say, Kevin and Christian Paul, I really appreciate you guys coming here and telling us the story because the problem we have here, and as the chair, and you know, and obviously you get challenged on all this, and someone's got to be the bad guy. problem we have here, and as the chair, and you know, and obviously you get challenged on this and someone's gotta be the bad guy. But, you know, the point is, is if people keep talking about it, public comments, I probably answer more phone calls and more letters about CAFOs every month and the misinformation. And once, and that's, I want to extend that to the people that talk public comment too. You know, there's opportunities for them to call any of us supervisors up. You've, you've opened your door up. Because I think a lot of them are hearing one source. And I think it's important that we bring people that actually know. Uh, you know, we have a farmer here, we have a, a couple other guys that are in the farming business. My wife has a little hobby farm. No one regulates my farm. No one comes out and looks at where my manure piles are. No one looks at my runoff. No one looks at anything I do. And, you know, to have you guys come in here and tell the public, that's what I'm hoping these opportunities are for. Is that people really understand what you guys are doing. And um, that's why I'm asking for us to have education every month. And uh, you know, I hope we can all work together. And I just can't tell you how much I appreciate you guys coming out here and, and same supervisor Olson said, coming and talking to us. And, you know, we got a lot on our agenda tonight. And we could have, you know, we've had hours and hours for a couple of years about this and I just want to thank you guys very much. Is there any last things you guys want to say?
Just wanna say thank you and um, well, actually last Monday, um, I had the privilege to give my high school teachers a tour of our operation. A number of them told me that when I graduated twelve years ago, after last Monday night, they had no idea what I meant. Absolutely opened their eyes to see that this is just not forty cows, I'm not out here milking the cows twice a day. Have to do what's right for our community.
Thank you guys very much.
I hope my uh, I hope my grandkids someday. You know, we hope, we hope this is going on for generations and generations. They'll be here.
I hope so too. You guys do a great job and thank you for having us.
Chris, I want to thank some guys on my neighbors, I request that.
Oh, you're welcome, Johnny.
He was, he was a kid from town that worked in the car wash and now he's got a real job and you guys are fantastic.
But he likes the right color tractors, right?
Well, yes, he does.
Not like his dad?
He's, he's a red man. Thanks again. Congratulations.
All right. Under the county board chair report, um, a couple of things. I think I'll start off, right off with the Eureka comment, I heard that at public comment. So, one of the things I've been doing for the last few months is taking phone calls, multiple ones, emails. Uh, the particular township Eureka, I've been, uh, they probably call me once a month. I've had multiple meetings with them over the last few years. And I'd said tonight that I would tell the board tonight what Eureka's working on still and, and this is my extension to them. I just wanted to tell the county board. They are about thirty days away from having some additional CUP. Um, you know, they're working on a CUP ordinance too. And they, they do say, you know, they know we need to get the CUP done. And they have the operational ordinance. And they know there's some flaws in it. Um, but they have been very proactive as far as working on a CUP. They've hired an attorney. So I've told them, when they get their CUP to where their board is ready to pass that, I've extended the offer that they bring that to our county. We will, you know, we have attorneys on staff. We'll send it to environmental services. So if we can do things with our CUP process, because that's what we have. We have a CUP process in place. The county, county put a CUP process in place. We do not allow CAFOs, swine CAFOs to be in the shoreline district, which took about half of the land out of Polk County for a swine CAFO. And uh, and we do have a CUP process in place, which the county had never done any of these things before. So, in the last couple of years, we have done a few things. I, I continue to tell everyone we talk to, bring the information to the county. It's great to get up and talk, but bring us pieces of paper. Bring us things that are approved, bring us things you've got through the state, bring us things that are legal. And the county board is open to always reviewing our ordinances. So I wanted to make that comment. Um, you did get, I got a letter this month and it was addressed to all the supervisors, so that's laying on your, your table here, guys. And it's from Wisconsin Pork Association. And what they basically say, and, and I guess I'll read it. Um, they're Polk County supervisors. I didn't, I don't, I don't know who these, I don't, I didn't talk to anyone there, but they, they reached out to us. Uh, agriculture's significant economic driver for Wisconsin, contributing a hundred and four point eight billion annual to our state economy. That, that economic impact is made possible by thousands of hardworking farm families across Wisconsin countryside. We would like to extend the invitation for you to visit a large family farm. Large farms can be referred to as a CAFO. These large facilities have many positive attributes that we would like to give you the opportunity to experience in person. Due to the biosecurity concerns, we're unable to allow you inside the barns, but we'll have a virtual component so you can see the inside firsthand. By visiting the farm and connecting you with a farmer, we hope to have a conversation about sustainability, management practices, and what regulations farmers follow farm on this site scale. But here's the issue I want to run by the board. Um, please indicate by Monday, October twenty-fifth, if you would like to be part of an experience. Um, and they've got the person's name. So, it sounded like with the email body that came with this, that they were inviting the county board to visit a swine CAFO somewhere in the state. And I'm just passing this out. And I don't know if that's something our county board is interested, I'm not quite sure how we would arrange that. But again, you know, clearly everyone realizes this is a hot topic. And if there are supervisors that want to go to that, um, you contact me, or if there's a show of hands tonight that we should do this or we shouldn't do this. Um, I'm not sure what everyone's feelings are about this letter. If there's any comments about it, we can talk about it, or we can just see what kind of response we get. Um, and know here, I don't know why, October twenty-fifth, the magic number. We let them know after that, next month too, maybe, I don't know. Um, do you have any comments about that? Would you like to go to a swine CAFO?
I've been to Solons.
No, this is for a swine CAFO?
There isn't any around here.
I know that, that's what they're saying. If, if people, I mean, because that's what we're all talking about constantly.
I, I don't travel and I never have since I've been on the board.
Okay, so you're not interested? Anyone else is? I, I don't care to go to one, I'm not in need of it, but I know there's some people are very passionate about it. Maybe it would help to understand what they do, but. I'll just, you guys, uh, Mr. Warren.
They didn't say, uh.
I have no idea.
That might not be where the farm is, you don't know.
I, does anyone know where there's a swine CAFO close to Polk County?
There are many close, but there's several south and east.
South and east?
There is some in Ritzland County on the other side of Madison.
I don't know, if, if there's interest, I could let them know that maybe, where are we gonna go? We, obviously, who wants to get on a bus for four hours, right? But if there's interest, I think we could let them know there's interest. If there's not, then this can happen. Supervisor Olson.
Well, the, the opportunity to find out about it, I mean, it's, it's a hot topic in this county, it's a hot topic in the county north of us. Um, and I think just the fact that the offer has been extended does not hurt to find out. Now granted, if it's, you know, two miles north of Madison, it's, you know, it's probably not going to work. I have no idea where the closest one is. Um, but pretty much what I said before is we, we hear an awful lot of, from an awful lot of people who I'm gonna venture to say have never been on a CAFO of any size, um, which is probably a larger farm of any size. Um, and I just think that the opportunity to it's not hard to ask and find out how far away it is, I'll say.
John?
Uh, Mr. Chair, as Chair of the Health and Human Services, I will contact Crystal one.
Okay. Oh, is, is he on this list? Oh, okay, Crystal wants you to know. So why don't we do this? Why don't I let them know that I presented the information to the board, we're gonna do a little follow-up. One of the questions is, sounds like is, where would they, where is one that we could visit? And they'll just have to leave the invitation open longer than the twenty-fifth.
I'll have some information at our Health and Human Services meeting. And by the way, our Health and Human Services meeting, which is on the second Tuesday, will be, Tanya requested that it be the second. The night, the day of our county board meeting? Oh, okay, so our Health and Human Services will be November second. So we've got something to present uh, for our budget meeting on the night, correct?
All right.
I'll have some information at our meeting.
I'll uh, I'll let them know what got commented on tonight. Um, County Eureka, one other thing that got passed out, Malia's on the phone. And a little bit of this is, again, Supervisor Rowdy brought it up, we've been talking about this. And so when you say things like that, as a board, I gotta just remind everyone, we are a board. When you, when you say, hey, we've been talking about this, we've been working on this, these things are of the conflict of interest, these walking quorums in the past, we've talked about. And uh, we had that in general government again this month, where um, I had a couple of comments, one written one about the uh, and it's in the minutes, so I, we laid it out there. Corporation Council Malia, I'll, I'll let Malia kinda pick up on it. I don't know that you got the minutes, Malia, but your comments were advise against urging the public to action, rather stating an opinion without a call to action. So one of the things in general government happened was um, Supervisor Dunkinson wrote a letter, kinda calling for action. And then there is a resolution. So, Malia discussed it with us about when you ask someone else to go talk to you and to say, I want you to take action versus you saying, hey, I want you to support this, I want you to support this. This is something I think our county's going in the wrong direction. We need more support for this or more sort, but we can't be about actually taking action. And so, Malia, do you wanna, did I say that right, what happened in general government and what our discussion was? And can you give us that opportunity now to kind of clear that again to make sure we're not having walking forum violations?
Sure, um, so the, you know, a walking quorum happens whenever a member of a governmental body engages in governmental business in a forum that's outside of the meeting itself. And then there's sufficient numbers, in other words, you try to get other folks that are also part of that same governmental body to act in conformity with your opinion. And so, of course, we all would know it would be inappropriate for a supervisor to contact a majority of the other supervisors and say, hey, how are you gonna vote on this? I want you to vote this way, this is why, and advocating outside of the meeting itself. And that then extends to social media, blogs, any type of um, email chain, telephone communications, all of those extended communications. So what, what came up at the general government committee was a question about a letter to the editor. And I, I did give the opinion that having a letter to the editor that just simply states an opinion and encourages others to become informed is, is not a violation of the open meetings law. But once you ask other uh, citizens to contact supervisors, to urge them to vote in conformity with, with your particular viewpoint, then it would cross the line. I, I must include that I did receive a telephone call from Andy Phillips today, who is the general counsel for the Wisconsin Counties Association, indicating that a supervisor from Polk County had contacted the WCA um, asking about an opinion regarding a walking quorum. He and I had a long conversation. Um, not that I feel like I need to defend my opinion, but he was, he was in full agreement, even offered to give a written opinion of, of the same. So again, the issue isn't so much expressing an opinion in, in a letter to the editor. However, you have to be careful too, if like one supervisor writes a letter to the editor one week and another supervisor responds the following week, even though it's a slower mode of communicating, it could still give rise to the same concern, even if you're not calling to action. So his opinion was, the best advice is to not write uh, letters to the editor as a means to try to advocate for a position. But if you do, certainly don't cross the line and ask for other folks, citizens, to contact supervisors to lobby them to um, see the, the issue in the same way that you do.
Right. Um, yeah, so go ahead, Fran. Let's, since the corporation council gave an opinion, I'd like you to.
One comment I wanted to make, because I think that this is a mischaracterization of what I actually wrote. Because I've never asked any member of the public to contact the supervisor on my behalf. That is not what it says. It says to contact the supervisors and talk to them about an issue. It does not say to talk to them favor of an issue or against it. I had so many people contacting me about that particular issue that didn't live in my district, that lived in all of your districts. And I would suggest to them that I'd be happy to talk to them, but they should talk to their own supervisors as well. So, I feel this is a mis, a mischaracterization in that I never asked anyone to contact a supervisor on my behalf. And I never asked anyone to advocate for a point of view, either for or against the issue, just to talk to them about it.
Sure.
Because they were contacting.
Can I take that? And I appreciate that, because I can tell you, being in the job I have, there's a lot of mischaracterizations every single day too that I get. So I understand that feeling of that. Supervisor Warren, no.
Well, you know, we're always getting emailed, always getting calls on issues.
Right.
That we deal with every day. But are you trying to say we can't tell them people, no contact this guy, or this girl?
No, no, that's not what it is. It's, it's, it's in a, the way I understand it, the way Malia explained it, it's, and we had this in the beginning of the county board a little bit too, and that's why it kind of seems like, it's like, let's just make sure we don't have a problem. You can contact anyone you want and talk about an issue. But you can't say to someone, hey, call Chairman Nelson up and tell him to vote on this resolution this month that I drafted. Because you're not allowed to call me and ask me to do that. And if you write it in a paper, that was what the phone calls we got and a couple of comments was, is that a violation of the walking quorum? So it got brought up and, and I, you know, we took it as a teaching moment again. Let's just make sure that we all really understand that, you know, we can all talk about issues. You and I can talk about issues, any of us can talk about issues. But we just can't call action in a little letter or talk to another supervisor and say, hey, I got this thing coming down tonight. I need to get enough votes together so we can do this tonight. That's what we're worried about the walking forum. That's the way I understand it. Malia can maybe clear it up more than I can, because I'm not a parliamentarian.
Letter to the editor that I'm in the middle of.
Sure.
Used to go to Malia before it goes to the paper.
Well, I'm just saying, maybe, Malia, Malia's our attorney. She's all of our attorneys and it's confidential. To me, I think if you feel like, hey, there's anything cooking, it probably doesn't hurt because it's in confidence, you can talk to her about anything you want and it's between you and her. It may not be a bad idea. Uh, because we discussed that too, I think Fran said, you know, I was drafting this resolution and the letter was done a month before. And, and Fran's discussion was, is, well, why didn't, you knew I was writing the resolution. Why didn't you tell me about it? And corporation council says, I can't watch all of you guys' social media and I don't watch all the papers. Please, if anyone asks questions about, if there's a walking quorum, you can call me anytime you want. Yeah, Mike?
I have a copy of Fran's letter in the intercom.
I have a copy of Fran's letter in the intercounty leader from September 8th. And the last paragraph reads, please talk to your Polk County Supervisor and local officials about the recycling center. You may also send comments to all the supervisors by emailing them to the Polk County Clerk, County Clerk at Polk, Polk County.
Sure.
Uh, for distribution to the county supervisors, period.
Yeah, so-
I'm not sure if Malia had that letter in front of her when she was talking to Mr. Phillips or not, but, um, uh, I don't think that paragraph said anything about what position, uh, any of the readers should take vis a vis the recycling center.
Okay, yeah, so the letter was, the newspaper was one thing. I had been contacted by two town officials specifically that had asked for them to stay anonymous. They were told to call and support the resolution. So one of them asked me to run it through the attorney. And so it wasn't all based off of just solely on the letter. It's just more about, let's just make sure we don't get in a rear.
I just wanna make a comment that how real this is, Jay Luke and I sat here on the county board when the Attorney General from the state of Wisconsin sat right here and said, yes, to do investigation. This was back right around 2000, Jay. And he said, yeah, under an investigation, Polk County is guilty of the open meeting law. And we were being, that was the first time.
Right.
He said, we're gonna put you on probation. And, uh, right from the journey, Attorney General, this is real.
All right, so, um, and then the other thing on my, uh, Chair's report is, I'm gonna ask Sharon to actually do it for me, because Sharon was involved. Sharon sent me the information and I feel like I'm more comfortable letting Sharon discuss this part of this.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Okay. Can I pass on that?
Yeah, go ahead, do whatever you wanna pass on.
This is, uh, wait, like, you can see these things placed all over the county and grocery stores and businesses, wherever they can put them up. And we've been getting so much feedback about Smithfield Farms. And on the backside, I decided to contact Smithfield Farms. So I wrote to their corporate offices. And I'll, I'll read that to you. Um, on the other side is the letter. On the other side is the letter that I wrote. And it's, um, what I said was, uh, there's been much speculation in our state regarding Smithfield and farm, farm, swine CAFOs. So I decided to go to the source and ask a couple of questions. Is it true that a Chinese company or the actual Chinese government now owns Smithfield? And number two, what's your plan for building swine CAFOs or subcontracting with other farms to do so in the state of Wisconsin? I'm a county board supervisor in Polk County in Wisconsin, and I can tell you, most, if not all residents are up in arms regarding this issue. We have 150-plus protesters at each monthly board meeting. We had hundreds of emails and phone calls from residents. And I can't ans- answer questions as we don't know what Smithfield's plan is for our county and our state. My phone is this, my email is this. Please respond, as factual answers are better than relying on rumors and innuendo. Well, lo and behold, they responded. They said, thank you for your inquiry. Smithville, Smithfield was acquired in September 2013 by WH Group, a Hong Kong-based and publicly traded company with global shareholders around the world. This partnership fosters the export of high-quality meat products from the United States and is opening, and it, and the opening of new markets to American-made products. WH Group is not a Chinese state-owned enterprise and does not undertake commercial activities on behalf of the Chinese government. We continue to raise harvest process and package our products right here in the United States, employing over 40,000 Americans, and do not import any of our food from China. And then there's a link to learn more about Smithfield. At this, an important piece is this last sentence. At this time, we have no plans or interest in expanding our hog production operations in Wisconsin, period. So I thought this was worth bringing to the board, because we just heard it again tonight in public comments, the speculation about Smithfield Farms coming into Polk County. They say they're not gonna do it. So I, I mean, this is factual. They sent this, you know, I, I responded. Did you wanna get this? And so I thought we should see this, because here it's boycott Smithfield Farms owned by the Chinese Communist Party. And, you know, that they're gonna come into Polk County and they aren't. They say they're not. Now, are they lying to me? I don't know, but I don't think they're lying to me. Why would they lie to me? So it's just information. I thought, we get a lot of information on one side. I thought it worthwhile to get it, you know, get the facts from, from the company that they're talking about. So.
Thank you, Sharon.
My two cents.
And I guess that's, I, I just kind of explained it like that, so I appreciate that. And I think that the main thing too, as the Chair of the County Board, is I'm always open for a phone call. I'm always willing to talk. If you talk, wanna talk about the facts, I mean, I think we're all here to help with keeping our county the way it is. And you hear that, you hear what the farmers are doing here. And it sounds like we probably gotta worry more about Supervisor Olson's farm. He's got no regulations. Not that we're gonna come after you, Supervisor Olson. But the, uh-
I'm close to Burnett County. Eyes are on you.
And I, and I, I don't know, I don't know where this ends. And I, you know, if the protesters wanna keep showing up every month, I, I don't care if they show up. Don't care that they take the 30 minutes of public comment up.
Getting colder.
Well, uh, I just wanna make sure it's clear that the county chair's doors open. I talked to many people on the other side. And I talked about some ideas we can do. I've given recommendations. But the problem, it's hard, it's hard to do this job when you hear people get up. And even in general government this week, we had people getting up, talking about the recycling center. They think we have eight and a half million dollars of ARPA money sitting in our account, which we don't. They think we had $150,000 from the Lime Quarry sitting in account that we could also use to save the recycling center. And that's the hardest job this is right here, is that that happens daily. Daily on our emails. Everyone has emails now. Everyone can post stuff on Facebook. And it's a full-time job to just track down all these loose ends constantly. So that's why I offered, Doug, if you wanna be county board chair, I would love for a guy that doesn't want me to do it, I would love for you to do it before you appoint someone else, because then you would get a real taste of what his job is, so. All right, that's it for the Chair's report.
Sharon, uh, did you take him for that margarita mix?
That's crazy, you know?
Yeah, and then these letters are being posted, like, uh, this was in La Groche Store. They posted it all over. They posted it on the, the, they posted on the, uh, manager's door. They posted on the bathroom doors. They posted on the front doors. They ran around the whole building and they're doing this in grocery stores, scaring people that this is happening. And I just, so that's why, that's why I'm gonna use this egg education every month. And I'm sorry, we're gonna, you know, if you wanna get rid of me because of that, go for it. But I'm gonna keep it on our agenda. And, you know, and I have it, and I put out last month, any small farmers, I told you guys, Doug, you wanted a small farmer. I said, have anyone call me. I got one, I got one call from one guy who didn't really even wanna be here as a small farmer. But he wasn't from any of these issues. And I got no calls from small farmers wanting to come in and tell us their story. So the offer's still out there. If a small farmer wants to come in and talk, let's hear the small farmer's story. Um, if we're gonna keep education and CAFO on the agenda and they're gonna take public comment and they're gonna be out in front, and I'm gonna get all the letters every month, we're just gonna keep making sure that correct information gets out. And then maybe we'll have a day where everyone can come together. And if we need to do more things, we can do. And let's do more things in Environmental Services to tighten it up a little bit for swine CAFOs. I, I've heard no one say we're not gonna do that. And I don't know how much clearer I can be on the record. My door is not shut as the Chair. I will listen to anyone. And anyone that has a good idea, I will run it through Malia and your committee, Doug, to make sure you guys got a chance to. But again, I, I've seen no new ideas. It's just, it's talk. No one has actually given us a new idea.
Well, and that's why I wrote directly to Smithfield, because I thought we deserved to know the fact. And instead of, we hear all this stuff and see all this stuff, but we, we need to know the facts.
John?
I wonder how far our agenda goes. It's, I was walking out door tonight. I got a call from, uh, Lady and Hudson urging me to vote against the CAFOs today.
Nothing to vote on. We're not, we don't have nothing. So County Administrator, your turn.
All right.
You got written in the paper this week too.
I got, uh, updates, information that I think you'll find helpful. Landfall's damp. Uh, tell you where we are with that. Joint application for the transfer of ownership between Northwest Electric and us has been submitted to the DNR. They're currently looking at that. In the meantime, we are doing the title work on all property involved. A little, you know, it's very old piece of property and we're trying to work out all the titles, see who owns what. And once we get a proper legal description of the parcels involved, uh, we will do a survey to identify all properties that is involved. There's, you know, believe it or not, there's some uncertainty on it. So we have to get it right. We do it. But we are making progress on that. Uh, the sports rec complex market demand study has begun. Uh, SFA, the consulting company doing this, was here, met with county staff, uh, super, some, couple of supervisors, as well as, uh, community leaders, athletic directors, uh, representatives of sports leagues, baseball, hockey, Questrians, all these different things to get input. Uh, and we had some very productive meetings. I, I think when the folks from SFA left, they were very impressed with how much people were organized and interested in this. As you know, the purpose of this is to say, is there potential for this type of project? They may come back and say no. Uh, but if nothing else, they'll come back with a lot of data, which not only will involve the sports rec complex, but it will help things like, um, the new ATV, UTV track up in Sterling, that proposal. It will help a proposal coming out of Amory to create a swimming pool and rehabilitation center. All this information we can share with any user. Uh, so I think it's gonna be useful. Good news, AT&amp;T FirstNet announced that a new cell tower is gonna be built in Eureka Center over the next couple of months, and that's going to fill, uh, a current gap in cell coverage and also improve some internet access in that area. So that is a very good thing. Hats off to all the folks involved in the past in developing a relationship with FirstNet. Uh, I know the police or the Sheriff's Department uses their communication. We here in the county do. And I think that relationship has, uh, I think sped up the process of getting a new tower in an area where it's needed. Update on the mechanical update here for the government center. Uh, LHB is approaching the 60% of the design, which is a milestone that gives us a greater degree of confidence in what the final cost will be. Uh, Chad, they said they will get the budgetary numbers, final numbers, or the very accurate numbers to Chad by November 8th, which means we can then start working on and have a firmer grasp on how we want to pay for this. Whether it be general fund, uh, bonding or, uh, ARPA or a combination of those. Uh, the, the project itself could begin in February and would be expected to be finished by the end of the year. Finally, the Stour Trail update. Uh, as you know, uh, Judge Black did not grant the injunction uh, request from the Friends of the Stour, which means that horses have been on the trail since October 1st. Uh, overall, the reports indicate that the trail is actually being used quite a bit by a lot of different parties. Uh, we've had, uh, very good reports on activity, behavior, uh, getting along with one another. Uh, I've received one complaint, but it was anonymous and no return information. Um, so we feel pretty good about that. In terms of what's happening next, we're still waiting on Judge Black to rule on the lawsuit brought by the Friends. Uh, don't know when that's gonna be, but we would expect it, uh, before, uh, the winter season, so before the snowmobile season. All right.
Any questions for the Administrator? I, I have one. When do you think the county board will actually get to see the plans as they get developed for the project? Is there some anticipation? And are we gonna do that committee of the whole? Plans to understand the scope of work?
Right. Uh, we can do that committee of hope. We'll probably bring it to general government first and then bring it to committee of the whole. We might probably do that this coming month, most here. Because we'll have the final numbers by November 8th. If not then, we'll by December.
By November, they're just finishing up the 60% design. But at that point, um, wanna come bring those to committee to start fine-tuning that final, um, the design.
Yeah, that was my question, because I've had a couple supervisors ask me, is the design just gonna get complete and we're gonna have a number? Are you gonna give the opportunity to the county board to look at the design before it's completed to say, we're all okay with that?
Yes. After we get to 60% design, we have that, uh, better comfort on what that design is. Um, we'll bring that to the, uh, general government base, they can look at it.
Could we, could we actually do it at the county board? Because I think the county board said we wanted to do this building remodeling committee of the whole. Could we do that at next month's committee of the whole? Or is that not gonna be ready?
We'll check with, um, how they do it. If they're ready for design, for a presentation of that.
I think it'd be helpful, before we get too far, just to keep everyone on board on the scope of work. That'd be good then. Any other questions about the building remodeling stuff? Majorities, I don't believe there are any on my end.
I do. Uh, real quickly, and this requires no approval from you all. Uh, but it's an appointment that the Administrator makes with the Housing Authority. Donald Prosey, who's been on the Housing Authority, uh, for, I guess, a while.
Yep.
Very active, very, uh, engaged, and he asked to be reappointed. So, uh, I am doing that, and his new term begins November 3rd.
Housing authorities are the third, third year at that.
John's our representative on that.
Or here. Also my cop.
Sure. Substance abuse, uh, scorecard, Chad?
You have the September 2021 scorecard in front of you. Same format as the past few months. IT did give me, uh, new data software as part of our 365. You'll learn how to use it. And by December, I'll start providing you like a scorecard book. Very robust software. This is just something I use itself. Friends continue methamphetamine, still the predominant drug. Um, residents outrank the non-residents as far as people arrested. Repeat offenders, still two to one over first-time offenders. That's not a good sign. We don't wanna see those repeat offenders consistently up there. Um, age category. It's still very interesting that the majority of arrests are people over the age of 30. We're not seeing, it's not any younger, it's the older. And then when you think about the recidivism, outranks first-time offender and attracts with the older offenders. And then the one really good thing that I saw for this month, if you look at the treatment, the current treatment court participants, we started tracking this, we started off at eight. Post-COVID, we're up to 14 actively in treatment court. Even more importantly, the Supervisor Middleton's point last month, you start to see some equity in each stage where they're on the program, which is what we wanna see. We wanna see people in stage one, stage two, stage three, stage four, that they're rolling through the program. So hats off to the CJCC staff through a very rough time for the last year and a half, going through COVID and going through coordinators. Treatment courts pick back up and we're seeing people progress, which is very, very important to what we're trying to do. Yes, ma'am?
Do you ever track, um, that number's flipped wrong, but do you ever track hospitalizations and overdoses? Do you even know that?
We could probably pull it out if we did some work with public health websites and that kinda stuff. But that would, that would get much deeper than what we can do right now. And clear data analytics will grow over time.
I just have one comment, Chad. I, uh, an individual I actually know- I, an individual I actually know through work, made a comment to us at a job site meeting here a couple of weeks ago. We had a lunch, and he said, yeah, my son got picked up again for meth. Hadn't been arrested in a number of years. And he goes, they let him out again. And he goes, I wish they would keep him. He needs help. And he's been doing meth for 15 years. He's been arrested multiple, multiple times. And now the dad is like, they know he's got a problem, and they let him out again to the community. And it's just something that I hear over and over. And I think, you know, how are we going to stop that? Because it's two to one this repeat. And so I don't know what the answer is, but that's what I hear.
No, I, I, I do, I do think at least one leg of the stool is firm, and that's the enforcement leg. I mean, we are, our enforcement division, the sheriff's office is out there being proactive, arresting people. But like I've said before, it's a three-legged stool. It's, it's enforcement, it's the prosecution, and it's the treatment. But I also think treatment's getting a little more stable. As you look at our drug court, it looks like we're doing a better job getting people enrolled. Remember, 17 is our maximum that we can handle in treatment court at one time.
So what do we do about the kids in the community? Because if we're going to stop it, we got to start with the kindergartners, right?
Well, and I think that, you know, that's something we talked about at CJCC. We have the DECK, which we're involved in, the Drug Admained Children. We have the Drug Free Community Grant now, which is a big deal for us as it expands, which that's in Tanya's division. But I do think we're all, I feel like DECK, Drug Free Communities, and CJCC are now really talking well and starting to move towards those modal approaches to, to, you know, the epidemic, which is young children, teenagers, older, you know, prevention, enforcement, and.
I'm just surprised, I'm surprised that we don't have 20 people stand and make public comment about meth, right? I mean, to me, this is, this is our epidemic. This is a huge issue. And I just hope while I'm on the board, we can work on that. That to me is the number one issue. John?
I was down with Stephen Point, Wisconsin County on Thursday, and a professor from the University of Wisconsin, a lady. University of Wisconsin has a whole division of students that are reaching out, and it's another division that can reach out to the county. She had a three-hour presentation.
You talked about that, and you were going to get with Chad on that, right?
I, I did.
I talked to him about that.
I did for the meeting.
Thank you. Tanya, you're, you're ready to go? COVID update?
Didn't jump the gun this time. Last time I was so eager, I tried to butt in front of Chad.
You're safe.
Gladly seen my time.
All right, so COVID update. Some good news, it looks like my numbers are going down a little bit. Positive cases are slowly heading that way downward. So we're glad to see that. I don't know if it's enough to say that there's a trend yet, but we're liking those numbers. The state's positivity rate went from 9.1 to 8.7%. Our positivity went from 16.9 to 16.1, and that's on a seven-day rolling average. So, you know, it takes a little while for that number to get down there, even though we're seeing more of a rapid decline on a daily basis. Numbers will be a little bit skewed because the state's reporting system has been down for the last three or four days. I think they just got it fixed today. So if you see some wonky-looking numbers on the website, that's why. It might look like we have a really high jump in our numbers, but that's, they're trying to play catch up with what's going on there with our positive cases. Let's see. The vaccine is, it's just at a slow pace right now. We are working with the radio stations to have a marketing campaign to promote vaccine. I know our, our marketing person is, is working on that now. Pfizer, we have a, a drive-through for booster shots next week, next Wednesday, from 3:30 to 6:30 over at the highway shop. So if you've had Pfizer and it's been six months since you had your Pfizer, so it would, your last dose was in April. So anytime January through April, if you had your series completed, you can come through the drive-through and, and get that for free from our county health department. There is a sign up, you can go to our website and sign up, just like everybody did last time when they did the drive-through. We are working on drive-through for when Moderna gets approved. Moderna, Johnson &amp; Johnson, and the Pfizer for five to 12-year-olds have all passed the advisory committees through the FDA. They're just waiting for final FDA approval. So once that happens, we will open up our drive-through clinic again. We did, majority of our vaccine was Moderna, so we would anticipate somewhat of a rush on that and starting that lineup again. We are, right now, over there at the highway shop, we are doing nasal swabs for testing. That started out with the vang. It's a little bit slower, but people are still coming through 60 to 100, and they are getting tested through our line. Our testing is five days a week. I think, uh, percent positive or percent fully vaccinated, we're just a little bit behind the state's average. 48%, state average is 54%. I think that's, that's about it, unless there's questions.
What's the current death rate?
The current death rates?
Total deaths?
In Polk County, I believe it's 71 cumulative.
Couple in the last week, then?
Yeah, we did have a couple last week.
Question, Tanya? So if you, so national news was saying that if you had the Johnson shot, that they said you, you'd be comfortable to go get the boosters from one or the other?
There's, yes, there is.
Are you allowed to do that here in Polk County?
We're not comfortable doing that at our clinic, just because of the way that we do it. We would refer them up to their clinic. And I don't know that there's a full recommendation to say, yeah, go ahead and mix and match, we don't care. So I know that it can be done. We're just referring up to the clinic for, to make that decision.
Are you waiting for a recommendation from someone to be able to start doing it?
From the FDA, we want final word.
So you want that from the FDA that it can be done?
Yep, as soon as we get the green light, then we.
You anticipate that coming?
Um, I'm not sure. I think we need to, to look at that a little more thoroughly on our ability to do that over at that drive-through style. It might be more appropriate up at a clinic, but we'll work.
There may be some other things involved with doing it. Okay. But you will announce to the county that it's allowed. Will you be making that announcement?
Yep.
When it's able to be done?
Yep. It's not that, I, I think it's, it's allowed right now, but is it encouraged? Is, would be more of an appropriate.
Okay. Amy?
So, yeah, we talk about this every time. Last week, we heard from Dr. Loggins about the impact that this, I guess we call it still a surge. You know, we're at 16.8 or whatever, and I will remind people, we had that 5% when we first started this, was sort of the tip over the 5% and you're into community spread, and it's a concern. So after Dr. Loggins talked to that, I happened to notice on Facebook that St. Clair Regional, and I'll just read their post the other day, Friday. They say, we need your help. As a community partner, as your community partner, we strive to fill the healthcare needs of the areas we serve. Unfortunately, the ability, can't see, I steamed up the glasses. The ability to meet these needs is getting harder. Right now, we are seeing unprecedented numbers of patients in our emergency department in the hospital. The sheer number of people requiring higher level of care strains all of our resources, creates shortages of available beds and services. Accidents continue to happen, stitches still need, are needed, bones will still break. Heart attacks and strokes are still serious concerns. We want to ensure we are able to help anyone suffering through these and other emergencies. That's why we are asking for your assistance. We ask all community members, both vaccinated and unvaccinated, to wear masks in public spaces, particularly indoors due to the very high COVID-19 case rate in our area. In addition, in addition, social distancing and hand hygiene is essential to reducing the spread. SCRMC is committed to continuing our long history of caring for our patients and communities. It's because we care about you that we ask you to get vaccinated and take the measures outlined above to stop the spread. We want to have the capacity to help you. When you need us, please help us by making sure that we can help you. And Amory said the same thing. Amory had posted something, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago.
I think they have an ongoing post.
Do they? Something about that. So anyway, the, the whole masking thing in public is, is really going to help our public officials. And I again want to just, I always say this, but to thank you and your staff for the crush that you're under right now.
You do bring up a point that you do run the risk, if you have a medical emergency, of being transferred farther out. We're hearing that the local beds are full, so you might be in the ER for an extended period of time, period of time. And when you, when they do find a bed, it might not be in your community. So that's just, it's just out there that.
But they're not full just with COVID patients. They've got all of the other things, too.
Yep. Thank you.
Go ahead, Brad.
I'm supposed to ask, when is, when is the booster for Johnson &amp; Johnson?
I'm in special, we'll do it right here.
No, not for me. Yeah, that's for me. You brought it up, you get it. I was told I had to bring it up.
Okay, Supervisor Warren, dog. How are large events regulated or aren't they regulated at all? Say you're going to have a fundraiser, or you're going to serve food with 500-plus people.
There, there are no restrictions right now. It's pretty much self-regulation and personal choice. When with a mask or distancing.
Play it out after the X. Tonight, we'll play it out.
I mean, I chose to read that tonight because I had three friends come back from a wedding who are all vaccinated, and they are now sick with COVID, and I was like, this, this virus is different.
Very contagious, very contagious.
Thank you, Tanya. So 14, so 15 is committee of the whole? Do we need a break?
Yes.
Give you a short break.
Yeah.
We'll take a five-minute break.
Freaking.
Let you go first, Lord, you are a gay. You think great.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, all right. This is my marks.
You bailed.
I did.
You bailed, just boom. I was going to say, hey, Tracy, what, you have to stand. I looked up and you're gone. I'll be sent in with. Boy, that was for the call. We have a motion going to committee of the whole?
Hello?
Number 15, update and discussion regarding ARPA funds, just bringing that up to us.
Hey, okay, so on your desk, you have this. Many of you have seen this in your committees, and I just wanted to take this opportunity, wanted to let you know that this thing changes on a daily basis. As people, word spreads and people are calling with all kinds of ideas. So just a few minor changes on there. But here's the.
Part one.
This is. You can see it up on the board as well, when I, I gave you a copy. We have the four categories that we discussed, plus on the back page are the local projects that are coming in from various towns, villages, cities in the county. Recommendation is that, uh, once you see these categories and you start developing an idea of what types of projects are being implemented. Problem is, some of these come in with very specific plans, cost estimates, how we're going to pay for it, so on, how we're going to share. Others come in with simply an idea, like provide housing for people with, with drug addiction, you know, and those types of things. We don't know what that means exactly, but it generates an idea. What we're recommending is take this and, starting next week or as we meet with the committees, we are going, staff is going to prepare a project statement for each one of these items that will just give you a basic understanding of what it is, so that you know, you know, what do you mean by this setup of fund for late treatment? We'll have a project statement. If we have an estimate on a cost, we'll provide it. If we don't, you won't. But present it to the committees, and then each committee have on their agenda the opportunity to begin the discussion on these, to ask questions, to make recommendations. The hope is that we can start prioritizing or weeding out some of those that we don't think are going to make the cut. They're all worthy, but we can't do all of them. So in the, in the public health, uh, or the human health services or Health and Human Services Committee, they might look at any of these that might affect or be related to their committee, and they can begin the discussion, asking staff questions. What does this entail? Do we have any ideas of what we think would prioritize? Maybe, maybe set a goal of, of two or three. And then you might set, set a goal of saying, are there two or three that we could just remove that, that really aren't going to meet the requirements that we have? And then, over time, and it doesn't have to be, you know, November 9th. It might be December, but over time, we can then come to the committee of the whole and say, staff has received from each committee their priorities, their ideas that they think are worth noting. But then throw it out into the committee of the whole, and you can begin to say which ones make the cut, which ones don't.
I think, and I'll just follow up, I think some of the discussion we've had, too, is, and Amy and I've seen that in the last couple of months with PTAG, was that, you know, possibly getting these to these, these boxes here in a committee of the whole, you know, we'll do that dot issue, or where the board can go up and actually then kind of measure these to say, here's the top two, right? And then have staff will do a deeper dive into, you know, more details about it. And I talked about finding a way that we could build consensus around a number of projects and that the county board could do it at committee of the whole. So that's the goal here in the next couple of months, that we would get to that point where, unless someone else has a different idea, that's kind of the direction we're kind of going down the road. Donald, go ahead.
So we're doing that, we have a CUP, we got a capital improvement plan already. Are these overlapping, any of these? Or is this, is this plan still sitting where it is, that we're going to do these, or can we move some of these up? I mean, page 37 on their book, it's just all these. Are these all separate from that then?
We see.
Are they separate from the blue one network?
Yeah, the, the, this, I should say, it's been highly recommended from the WCA and people who are involved with this, that in our minds, we keep ARPA separate from the budget process. Now, you will see in the budget, there are some options for you all to say, do we want to fund this from general fund, or is this something that we might want to consider for, for the ARPA fund? But we, we don't, this, this not tied together necessarily.
And the improvement plan still is kind of in effect, basically, that we have here, that we're looking at.
Pardon?
Capital Improvement Plan.
Yep.
These projects are staying.
You'll notice on here, I put under infrastructure, the five-year capital improvement plan. So the thought being is we can go down the list at 2022, for example, and use all of our ARPA funds and not do all the projects on there. Uh, but it's on here, and so what you might want to do as a committee or at the committee of the whole is say, you know what? There are a couple of projects on the capital improvements plan that we think are worthy and should be considered as opportunities for these ARPA funds. Will it be every one of them? I don't, I don't think so, but, but you might say, here are the ones that we think are most important.
Supervisor, follow, follow on that comment if I can. On the capital improvement five-year budget, some of the items are designated as unfunded. Does unfunded mean just that, or does it mean something else?
So if I can step in on the capital improvement plan, if it's funded, it means, and the only thing you're going to see funded mostly are in 2022, because the administrator has recommended that levy dollars are used for the funding. You will see a couple future years, something like the sheriff's cars are on the capital improvement plan, though they're automatically funded each year from levy dollars. But if they're unfunded, it means it has not yet been determined. They're not in the administrator's budget, and the board has not yet determined how they would be paid for this year, if undertaken this year. If they're on the capital improvement plan for 2022 and the administrator does not approve and recommend them and the board chooses not to adopt them, then they will shift later into the capital improvement plan for future years.
Those four that are designated as unfunding are potential candidates.
Exactly. The only thing you're gonna see funded is what the administrator has designated this year out of levy dollars for what is recurring, like, oh, has some highway vehicles that are recurring. The sheriff has some vehicles that are recurring in future years. Otherwise, each year when we look at the capital plan, except for those few things, they're unfunded until the administrator or the board determines how to fund them or whether to push them off.
Thank you. I think you'll find two.
Supervisor Warren doll. Fairgrounds doesn't have anything behind it. Placeholder, does that could be something? I put that in there because it could range from one item to everything that they put in their letter to whatever they need. I mean, that's an option. It's, yeah, it's wide open. And, and.
I'm trying to be smart.
And, yeah, that's what we're trying to do. And, and that's what I was gonna say is, some of these that were the broadband expansion. We don't have the specifics yet, but as we talk in the committees and as we talk amongst ourselves here, I think we'll come up with, let's, what if we did this? And then somebody in the committee will say, what about this? And we'll start building something if we think it's that important.
Now, to answer Supervisor Warren doll's question though, in the, in the budget, there is funding for the fairgrounds issue. I don't know if you noticed that.
Right. Yeah. If there's additional things, that's what we were saying, is you can put it in the ARPA project and then someone could throw our funds to a big discussion about using it there. Exactly, or later in the day, we're gonna have a resolution that. So we will, now like tomorrow, Environmental Services, I don't think it's on the agenda, but in two weeks, the next meeting, we'll have a discussion on this and we can begin that process trying to narrow it down so that we don't, we don't come in here the, for the next few months and have 60 things to discuss. Everybody try to narrow it down through the committee process. Everyone feel comfortable with that process? It means it's up to the board how they want to do it. If there's consensus to keep going this direction, then we'll just keep moving this direction.
Oh, wait, we, the administration wants $7 million. I don't know about that.
Vince, I need to pay.
How much of a raise do you need here?
I still question, I mean, when we have local community projects, how do you justify, I'm gonna give this community money. This community didn't even maybe realize we were asking for them to submit anything. You know, like, I know you just got this stuff from Eureka, because I went to their board meeting and talked to them about it, and they called, I said, you better call Vince. But, you know. I like the countywide projects, and we have so many things that need to be done at the county level because stuff's been let, some stuff has slid for years, you know, like the museum stuff, and that's a county building. We gotta, if we don't keep up what we already have, it's gonna fall apart around us. But personally, I think those types of projects, the fair buildings, the museum building, this building, the, the.
What role?
I know, I know, I know, I know, but and I'm not saying the 7.7 million per year because we already have alternatives for that. There's other things we don't have alternatives.
I think you're gonna have an opportunity to talk about that because that's what we discussed last month, that there are all a lot of projects out there. We had supervisors say, I at least want them to be make the list. If they don't make the cut, they don't make the cut. But I think it gives communities an opportunity and hopefully press covers this story that we are looking for community projects, townships, municipalities, anyone in Polk County. The door is open. If you have a project, please submit it to the administrator. If you have any ideas in any village, township, anywhere in the county, let's make the number, get on the list, and then we can talk about it.
Mean you're gonna get it.
Huh?
Don't mean you're gonna get it, but.
We put it on the list. Right? Okay, and we'll move on from that topic on Committee of the Whole. We got a, Bob, are you gonna do number 16, discussion review of the comprehensive trail network plan?
I will introduce or set the table. Our consultant is online, Kevin. Hello, are you online?
Yeah, I'm here.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to just set the table and just provide some brief context. You all recall back in the summer of, you recall back in the summer of 2020, per county resolution, a special committee called the Parks and Trails Advisory Group was appointed as well as allocated $50,000 of seed dollar, seed money to to identify recreational opportunities for all recreational users. After that resolution was passed, PTAG was formed, mobilized, we met monthly beginning September of last year. PTAG decided to develop the comprehensive trail network plan. Again, that identifies recreational opportunities for six user groups. They include ATV, UTVs, snowmobilers, hikers, equestrians, biking, as well as cross-country skiing. Tonight, our consultant, Bill Spragnether, is consultant with Alta. We'll deliver or share with you all the product of this initiative. So we're gonna be really brief, briefly talk about the process, identify and share with you the projects that were identified. It also includes some planning level cost estimates for your consideration in 2022 budget. We'll like to point out, on your desks, there is some handouts. Provides some additional information, and they really reflect what Bill will be presenting here shortly. This larger handout is pretty comprehensive. It talks about the ranking user group, project description. These icons here are of value. They actually identify other user groups and how that, how this project would complement them. So those projects with the greater number of icons would have the highest impact. And then there is again, some project costs after grants, as well as how feasible, ease of implementation. I just wanted to point that out. There's a little more detail. Bill, we'll be, we'll be talking about that as well. Also on your tables are the process, how we got through the project recommendations. This is the fourth body. The fourth committee that has vetted these projects has started with PTAG, was vetted through Environmental Services, General Government, and now it's for you, the whole county board. And then this, this Gantt chart or project management tool explains the projects that will be implemented over the next three years. In particular, 2022, those are the projects that we plan to begin implementation or planning for next year. This is not the end of the process with our relationship with Alta. Once, if, if the county board endorses this, our next steps is to continue on with the planning and cost estimates for the high priority projects. So we're not really done. Our contract with Alta continues on. Is there any questions? Open to the floor.
All right, well, thank you. And Bob, I appreciate that. I have these documents to share with you on the screen as well, but I don't have the ability to share my screen. Chris, what was that?
You just tried to lean into it a little bit, Bill.
Okay. Um. So I don't have the ability to share my screen right now. If whoever is managing the system on your end could give me that permission to share my screen, I will. Otherwise, you just get to look at me. Um, so the project, many of you I know have been involved in this process from the very beginning. And here we go. Oh, it's not letting me share my screen still. So, um. This process has gone through a number of stages where we gathered information from the public, from all of you, from members of the Parks and Trails Advisory Group. And then we developed an initial project list for improvements to trails and trailheads and trail amenities that was broken down by user group initially so that that there were certain projects that were targeted towards snowmobiling, ATV and UTV use, equestrian use, foot trails, cross-country skiing, cycling. Along the way, we found a number of projects that were, that crossed a lot of those, those, those user groups so that, you know, one project could really benefit multiple user groups. And we found a number of projects that were not really construction projects, but were further evaluations and feasibility studies or even policy changes. An example of that would be like the county developing a policy where when it did road work, it would widen a shoulder to allow cycling on county roads. And some of the feasibility studies that came out of this, out of these recommendations were working on, on, on the Gandy Dancer further, looking at that, looking at ways to connect ATV routes from St. Croix Falls to the northern border of the county, also connecting the Gandy Dancer and the Sower, and a number of other initiatives that will still be part of our final report. Though they were not necessarily discussed today as a high priority project, they're still gonna be in the final report so that in two or three or four or five years, people can go back to that and it's still referenced the work that has come out of this, even though they're not necessarily what, what we're discussing this evening. I try. You can see this now. All right. Um. So, one of the things we did in the, in the project, obviously, many of you were there. We had these meetings, these stakeholder meetings with the user groups. There was opportunity for people to enter information on maps that were online as well as work in a survey to give us information. And, you know, what we learned in a snapshot was that everybody felt that the current facilities were inadequate. That there's a lot of comparisons being made between Polk County and counties adjacent, which have a great deal more county land or federal land to access for, for trail use. So there's really a pretty significant constraint in Polk County for using large bodies or large amounts of public land for long-distance trails. But the long-distance trails are what everybody really wants, right? Connecting the Gandy Dancer to the Sower Trail, connecting those two trails outside of the county. And making those facilities really long-distance trail connections, whether it's for a cyclist or an ATV user, a snowmobiler. Some of the things, some other things we learned is that the walkers on the, on, on, on the trails really value ADA accessibility. They value solitude. They value the, the, the ability just to go for like an afternoon walk after work. A lot of that has to do with the lack of sidewalks and towns. Then from all the comments we got, we developed a set of goals for the user groups that express the values that they place on recreational trails. So there is a theme that you can see here, long distance access for snowmobile use, ATV use and cycling, as well as for kind of long-distance backpacking on the, on the Isaiah Trail. So ATV goal was to develop long-distance segments and loops, primary natural surface trails and connect the network to towns and village centers, as well as across county borders to the state trail network. Snowmobile goal was to develop a long-distance trail system that connects to the state trail system across county lines, utilize public lands for long-term trail network and route certainty. A big problem with the snowmobile trails currently is that a lot of them use private lands, and when lands change hands, people sometimes forbid access when they currently have it. Foot trail goal is to develop accessible trail options that provide opportunities to connect with nature, provide safe places to walk, et cetera. Equestrian users, they would like to develop trails that have a variety of experiences available. They'd like to see amenities like hitching posts and water stations, camping locations, rest points, adequate trails for adequate parking for trailers. Cycling users, there's really kind of two different, two different groups here. You have like the mountain bikers and the road cyclists who also use the multi-use trails. But in general, they wanted to see improved connectivity between communities to enhance the long-distance off-road or side path travel. And then the cross-country skiers really felt that just improving on the existing system at Balsam Branch was, was, was their primary goal. And to provide better access for snowshoers and fat bikers so that the ski trails would be less disrupted by the other users. So, as Bob mentioned, we went through a series of revisions to our project list, which had probably 60 projects on it, right? And our goal was to narrow it down to hopefully six. We're not quite at six, but we're getting there. And then develop those six further for, through like concept design. So our initial.
Bill, hold on a minute. We got staff has a comment.
Bill, do you mind if we, we relieve you of being the? Bill, do you mind if we let we relieve you of being the presenter and we'll simply post your presentation? And you can just run through it and we'll we'll change this slide.
Sure.
You can't read.
Yeah, no one can read the presentation on your end, too small.
Oh, yeah, I figured you had it in your hand also.
No, we don't.
We have this.
This looks different.
Now we have it.
It's not his presentation.
You're right, the next few slides will be addressed.
Okay. So Bob, what what did you want to do now?
Going to pull up recommended projects page.
Okay, page six. There you go. Yeah, so we initially developed a long list of projects that was ranked through a an evaluation tool by staff and and myself. P tag, the Parks and Trails Advisory Committee provided input, whether, you know, to to change kind of what were the highly-ranked projects or select others, change the way they were written. We incorporated that information and then went to the Environmental Services Committee. They had the same opportunity. General Government also had the similar opportunity, and you can see here for like the ATV and UTV user group, the project recommendations are to number one, expand the facilities at Sterling, which are really two projects, expanding on the existing trail network. And then the second piece of that is developing a an intensive use area, approximately twenty-eight acres for kind of one backcountry riding. And then the second project is to is a feasibility study, looking at the Gandy Dancer, but not only the Gandy Dancer, to develop the most feasible route from St. Croix Falls to the Burnett County line. Next slide. And then for the snowmobile group, and I, it was interesting that it was on the ARPA Fund project page also was is the Woodley Dam Trailhead. And then the second project that was recommended is to expand existing parking or build new parking along the Gandy Dancer in an undetermined location at this point. Next slide. And for the hiking and foot trail user groups, there, the the top project there is to connect the D D Kennedy site with the Algren Wildlife Preserve. Um. That does involve some complex, potentially some complex work at the road crossing where there's some culvert work that needs to get done. Aside from that work, it's pretty simple. You could include into this project a trailhead parking area and, you know, a crosswalk and wayfinding and kind of a nice amenity right there that could access trails that are able to provide kind of a semi-wilderness experience in a potentially handicap-accessible location. And then the second project is listed as H4 because that's how it scored out in our initial ranking. And that would be to build or expand the facilities at or along the Gandy Dancer, including bathrooms, improved wayfinding and amenities such as benches, and really make the Gandy Dancer a more of a linear park experience rather than a a gravel trail through the woods. Next slide. The next slide is for the equestrian user group and had a difficult time making decisions with the equestrian user group. The, you know, P P tag had four projects, ESC, increased that to five, and then by the time we got to General Government, it was down to three by combining projects E1 and E2. But really, it's it's looking at project E2 was to develop a location on county lands for equestrian use. That would be identifying a a place where the soils are compatible for equestrian use. They're not too wet, not too rocky, et cetera. And then obviously, developing adequate parking in that location. Um. Second project, it was to develop a feasibility study for potentially introducing equestrian use onto the Gandy Dancer. And then the third project is to expand parking along the Stour Trail midway. And that's really one of the, one of these projects that would benefit everybody, not just the equestrian users, but anybody who who would potentially be using the Stour. Next slide, please. For the biking user group, enhancing the Gandy Dancer Trailhead at St. Croix Falls Visitor Center was seen as as a very high priority project, benefiting not only local cyclists with restrooms and better parking, but also having a much better tourist connection that would attract people to the area. It also become kind of a hub, and eventually it could become the location where a trail could jump over the river, connecting with the Swedish Immigrant Trail in in Minneapolis, as well as making the connection between the Stour and the Gandy Dancer, or even heading further south. Um, and then the second project for the cycling user group was to develop biking trails on county lands, and this is actually specific to mountain biking. So it'd be identifying a parcel of land that is suitable, and then developing the trails and parking for mountain biking on existing county forest land. Next slide. So here we have, oh, I'm sorry, cross-country skiing. Um. We have three projects all focused right in on kind of the Balsam Branch D D Kennedy area. So the first proposal is to improve the facilities at D D Kennedy and connect them to Balsam Branch, so that the county has control over the maintenance and management of cross-country skiing outside of what the Balsam Branch Not-for-Profit manages, and expand on the Balsam Branch rail system to provide more skiing for more people. Um. The next project was to identify another parcel of land, again, in the county forest, where cross-country skiing could be viable. And then the last option is to work with the town of Garfield and the Bible Camp to develop a unified recreational management plan for that whole cluster of parcels. Because there's a lot of, there's potentially a lot of activity that could happen there. It's not all on county land, and it could be a great opportunity to you to share some resources between different different landowners. Next slide shows a very rough schedule, you know, three-year schedule of how some of this could play out. Looking at at the known available funds and putting together some pretty, pretty rough cost estimates at the planning level. You know, what what could what could start rolling next year? What would wait till 2023, and then what could wrap up by 2024? Again, keeping in mind that when this final report is delivered, there's going to be a lot of projects that are going to be discussed in that report that aren't on this list, and those are things that you might want to start implementing in 2024. Um. Next slide. So this this is our discussion slide, basically summarizing all of the projects that we just discussed under one page, it shows their approximate location within the county, the ones along the Gandy Dancer Trail. They're just placed next to it, so E4, A2, H4, and S2 are kind of along the Gandy Dancer, but they represent projects that would be on that trail itself. So at this point, pass it back to Bob, and I'll address any questions if there are any.
I am just running some quick numbers, Bob. If if we said, let me look at the budgets. Am I correct to say on ATV about $480,000 total? Projects that made the list? Reading that right?
So that.
So.
That is correct. However. However, the the motorized trail projects are potentially 100% funded through state grants. So.
Okay, so, yeah, I just don't want to go into a bunch of, I just want to make sure, so we got 480,000 ATV, 500,000 snowmobile, 650,000 hiking, 180,000 equestrian, 325,000 biking, and 350,000 for cross-country skiing. Is what's proposed, regardless of whether we get grants or not. Those are budgets for studies and construction projects over the next few years, right? That's what's being proposed. That's gone through committees and through General Government, Environmental Services, and that was made the the list.
Right. Again, on this sheet is the estimated project cost. First column is the total project cost and the bottom there. So when we look at the ATV, TV projects, the range is 460 to 680. However, because it is a motorized activity, the stated is much greater, so a lot of those costs can be subsidized between 80 to 100%. So the county cost for ATVs is and that's explained on each subsidy.
I guess. I just wanted to get a little idea on the scope of the work, regardless of where the funds come from.
Some of these are are crossing over too in the study. If you love, I think some of these studies for the forest land is.
Actually, the forest feasibility study to add silent sports to find space or loops for equestrians, for the cross-country skiers, for the mountain bikers has evolved from environmental services. It was a feasibility study. When we had this discussion with General Government, changed to an actual construction project. So the planning piece will be done in-house. So rather than hiring consultants or doing another study, because some of us may have planning fatigue, we have the capacity, and that's why we spent some time thinking this through as to what could internally, what do we have, the time, the resources, the capacity. And that's why some of these projects, first year's planning, really just our cost. In-house cost. Fifty thousand is actually for rebuilding, reconstruction.
The reason I brought that up, Bob, because this goes to what Mike was talking about earlier, was on his, when Supervisor Fisher was talking about the capital improvement project, unfunded, funded. So in General Government, if I'm correct, this is where I want to make sure that, you know, we we voted unanimous to fund all these projects with with our motion at General Government was to fund all the projects on the list and the balance of the money from General Fund. Now, obviously, you can't do all the projects next year, but I guess this is a concerned supervisor for down the road. This goes to if we've identified these projects are projects that we want to fund, what I would hate for to happen would be you guys say, well, we can only do X amount of dollars this year. I would think that we would fund the projects as capital improvement projects, even if they take two or three years, that we're not coming back to this every year to say, oh, do we have funding now for this project in 2023 or 2024? They make the capital improvement list, well, then they should be funded with our funding this year, and you guys carry the funding over to keep working on these projects. Am I reading that right on how this came out?
So with funding, between now and November, any of the committee amendments all all integrate into the budget. But with funding, you can still only, if 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 we said 1.5 million dollars next year for Parks and Trails for this, but the Parks and Trails Department was only able to accomplish $900,000, then in the next budget cycle, you will still have to go back through and budget again for the main 600,000. Can't say in 2022, here's 1.5 million dollars for Parks and Trails, and it automatically gets renewed.
Excuse me, that's not what we said. We didn't say give them a blank check. We said, here's the projects we want to fund.
Right.
It could be capital improvement projects that are funded in out years, not just giving them a bucket of money.
No.
In a specific.
Right, and I've got that written down, but it's like 1.55 or something like that. But what it will do on the capital plan is we'll show the year and that it's funded, and even if it's in 2023 part of it, it'll show in that year and that it's funded with fund balance. It still has to be appropriated each year in the budget cycle for the next.
Okay, so we're not going to, we're not going to fall into the trap where we say, oh, there is a project approved that was never funded.
You know, on the capital plan, it'll be funded.
Okay.
But the budget resolution is only binding for 12 months.
But you will make sure future boards know that this project was on a capital improvement project, and it was funded in 2021.
Exactly. A prime, a prime example would be the jail controller project that cost about a million dollars. That took more than one year, so we did a carryover in the budget, and the board approved, yes, carryover the remaining funds, and next year to finish the project.
Yeah, because that's, that wasn't presented to General Government. When we made our motion, what you're saying today, we didn't hear that at our General Government meeting. Well, I heard that we funded, we funded everything that made the list.
Right. And and just like the jail controller project, we can put it all in 2022, which is what General Government said to do. But if it doesn't get done and spent, then you have to move that money forward in the budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So it is non-lapsing.
It's non-lapsing in the fact that we'll put it in the budget, but it lapses if the board votes not to do it again.
But why, why won't we put it in the budget? And then if it doesn't get done, well, then we know we funded it and then reappropriate it.
And normally, we do.
You do that. So you are going to fund with General Government.
Right.
In your budget.
But if if y'all recall, in the budget resolution, there'll be a carryover section, and say, not all that money was spent 2022.
Right.
The proposal would be to carry it over to 2023.
You will prompt the board to realize they got to. You will prompt the board to realize they got to carry over, that they're going to have to reauthorize.
Correct.
That's how it'll, process will be.
Correct.
Okay.
Like that land and water, and there's stuff comes and leaves, stuff.
We have to carry it over.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
Or Bill, in the study, report, whatever, and I'm hoping we could get maybe an email copy of some of this that was up here that we hadn't already seen. You mentioned one of the goals was connecting the trails with adjoining counties and otherwise so on. And I'd, I'd like just a little, if you could flesh out a little bit, by, by how much have you actually looked at that or have any specific ideas, or is that just a thought that's been put forward at this point?
So that is, is a thought that has been put forward by a number of user groups. And it primarily focuses around when, when that discussion happens, it discuss, it's around the Gandy Dancer and the Cat Tail Trail and the Sawmill. So.
Okay. I was going to say the Gandy Dancer is already connected, and you mentioned having some additional trail connected to Burnett County.
Right. So the Gandy Dancer is connected, but it's not connected for all the desired users.
And that, that, that answers my question, but I, I had one on the, on the Swedish immigrant trail. That has been much talked about and having a bike route across the river, et cetera, et cetera. Have you gotten into that at all, or would that be a major consulting project for you?
So that was, that, that is on the project, on the longer project list. And I, I was, I was actually curious about that when I was talking to one of my colleagues today because in the public comments, connecting the, the Gandy Dancer to the Stower Trail was kind of the biggest or the most commented on item. A ton of people commented on it, but that was their goal. And what happened during the development of the projects was that ended up getting combined with connecting the Gandy Dancer and the Stower to the Swedish immigrant. And I think when all of that got combined, it became too big of a project. And so it's still on the list, and it could be broken out again. And how that actually happens, you know, it's, it would require a lot of coordination with multiple agencies, two different states, the National Park Service. And it would be a, a pretty big effort to figure that out.
Thank you.
I'm going.
Is there a part of this future design, is that being considered? That's what I had heard in the redesign of the 243 Osceola Bridge? We've set for.
I would, I would anticipate that if, if we show, so the way these, these kind of projects have impact is when if we show them that it is a priority of the counties to make that connection happen. When, when the DOTs look at replacing that bridge or upgrading that bridge, it can be pointed out to them that this is something that the public desires. If it's not in record, say in this plan, then they don't have that on record, and it's harder to make that argument. So by having it in this document, it will support that effort.
All right, keep going, Bob. Are you guys done with your presentation?
I'm here to ask.
That's it. Yep. We were asked to make a short one today.
Try to keep it brief. You know, like Bill mentioned, we had dozens and dozens of projects to look at. And we applied 12 different criteria to measure feasibility. One of the biggest variables is, is it county-owned? Because the ease of implementation is much easier with property. We're dealing with property, adminis, easements. Makes those projects a little more challenging. So that's what I'm seeing. Those projects that rose to the top really focus on county-operated.
Can I just follow back up with Chad?
Yep.
Well, I understand you guys are talking about the two boards. Oh, well, all the projects that are on this list, the in our CIB are being over so long it takes to get done.
They will. Typically with CIP items, once they go in there, unless the administrator or division director says, I don't need that anymore. If they're not done or approved one year, they move to the next year, and we just kind of keep going.
That's how the continuity will happen between boards.
It's, it stays in the CIP. And for example, when I redo the CIP with this, it'll show that it's funded in 2022 with the mechanisms we discussed in general. And then if it doesn't get done in 2022, it shifts to 2023 funded with the same mechanism.
And Supervisor Milton, and I, here's, here's my concern, and I think I've shared this at our meetings, that our staff can only do so much work, right? So you've never spent a million dollars before on trail planning in the county's history, probably all the years put together. So the thing I'm concerned about is just like my little business. Someone can call up and say, hey, we want to build 10 more houses this year. I physically can't do it, but if the jobs are right, they're funded right, I can outsource that work. And that's why I don't want to be scared off by, oh, we can only do this much work this year. And if we've got enough money that we've approved and we're moving it over, I would certainly ask the staff to be aggressive as far as, hey, I can do this, but I'm going to need to hire someone else to do this, this, and this. And the funding is there for you guys to work on projects simultaneously. So I, I'm, I'm going to push really hard personally is that we just make sure we fund all the projects that are, all these committees and all this hard work everyone's done. We have the money to do it. Let's get them all rolling. If we're halfway through a project next year and it comes budget season, and you've only spent half of the money on that project, but at least you started it and you had your toe in the door. You know, that's what I'm afraid of is that two, three years down the road, you got another board sitting here and they go, oh, yeah. You know, it's, we're not going to fund that anymore. Or administrator says, yeah. Or like Chad says, hey, I want to move the money over here. This is a priority. I'd like to make sure that we're doing everything in our means and you tell us. Right?
Right. And that, and that's how, that's how it happened. We put it in the resolution. We put it in the capital plan.
Okay.
And then we got that for future planning purposes. But I just, I just, to be clear, the resolution's only binding for 12 months. And then the board has to reaffirm each continuing resolution.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just.
Give us enough there that we don't.
Right? Yeah. I just don't want to tell you that if you put it in the 2022 budget, it can't be undone because it can be undone in future years by future.
I understand. I get that. Don't mind a future board undoing it. I just don't want staff to not get it done.
No, it'll go in the cap.
Okay. As we hear about projects that've been in our CIP where we think they are, and it goes all the way back to the days of the fair. Oh, yeah, it's there, it's there, it's there, but it really never was there. And, you know, we just got to make sure that if the public is saying to us, fund these projects, that they are funded and we're going to get them done. Whatever you have to do, get them done.
Well, it is a county priority. And I will say, I'll just speak on behalf of the staff. We're excited to work on this. This is the new frontier. And in any event, we do have to farm this up and outsource it. There is still that oversight, whether it's Mo's governing committee or environmental services. There's still going to be that in terms of there's still that oversight.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you all.
Good job.
I appreciate it.
Seventeen Administrator Capital Budget.
Hey, I'm going to give a kind of a general overview of the budget, answer some of the key questions. I give you all, and I think you all have your budget books with you. If not, I know Lisa had provided a couple of copies up there. That's and okay. Well, I did this in general government. I can kind of do it verbally like I did there if you can't find us. Should say budget. When we went into the budget this year, the, the word, yeah, there you go. The word was, okay, we're going to hold our expenses flat. Last several years, we've been putting significant amount of money back in the general fund. And then if there are extra needs, go through the additional spending request fund. So, so we, we wanted to keep a conservative approach to it. And, but then allow each division to say, based on our current needs now, here's what's extra that we want to add to it. In addition, we wanted to, throughout this thing, continue to shift resources to where our priorities are. What I can say then for the budget this year that's been submitted to you all for review is that this budget does not exceed our levy and that unused levy from prior years are not being utilized. Why that's important is, is last year we didn't use about, oh, just under $400,000 or $350,000. And hence taxpayers did not get taxed on that. And, but the state allows us to use that unused levy in certain future years. But we've chosen not to do that at this point because we didn't want to add that to the taxpayer burden. Once I go over the general overview of this budget, the recommended next step is that here, we can go back to on this at home, come to your next committee meetings and discuss any proposed amendments at that point. And then those will get worked in through the general government agenda, which will be just prior to the board meeting, a couple of days before the board meeting. And we'll kind of roll them up through the general government committee, and then the final decision will be made on Tuesday, November 9. In the booklet, the next page that you'll see, oh, okay, you got that up there. It looks like this, and so I've kind of summarized it on that slide up there. But basically tells you that, you know, you always look at opportunity and what happens to the tax base. The equalized value of our properties went up. Chad corrected me. I put about 10%. It went up about 9%. What that does is, is helps in our levy. Or I'm sorry, it helps reduce the tax rate for the citizen. The allowable levy in 2021 was 22.3 million. The allowable levy in 2022, based on the adjustments and so on, is 22. almost 23 million. However, because we are not using the unused levy from 2021, the proposed levy that I have in my budget is 22.6 million. Tax rate in 2021 was 4.27. So that's the percent on $100,000 in value. It's now going down to 3.843. So that's good, right? The tax rate goes down, but remember, equalized value has gone up. So in many cases, people see that it's kind of the same. What I can say then is the recommended budget does not current, touch our current fund balance. But what I propose to you doesn't go in and say, hey, we got to take money that's been into our general fund. Don't need to do that. However, any additional spending items that you all decide upon, and you all have amendment opportunities, or if you look at the additional spending items that are left up for your decision, those would have to be funded by either ARPA funds, the fund balance, or asset protection fund. If, if, again, if it's something that is eligible for that, or we could dip into the unused level. So that's something for you to decide. When you evaluate those options that are on the later page, you can decide whether or not, how are we going to pay for it? We do have some options. This next page is our columns report and the budget book that you have, pages two to seven. I put this in here because that's something that Chad, his staff, and we look at on a regular basis. It basically breaks down the budget and FTEs for every department in the county. And, and it runs across there. But on page seven, I, I put the summary on this slide. And what I can tell you is the total income projected, and even though the date is wrong on here, it's 2022 total. The total income for the county is expected to be about 66.8 million. Whereas total expenditures will be about 64.8. She say, hey, are we coming out ahead 2 million? Well, actually, no, it's, it's flat. That $2 million is primarily the $2 million that we had to put in the budget that we anticipate getting from the state of Wisconsin for the Clampole Stand. So really, we're breaking even here. The next pages that I'll point out are the budget administrator, or the administrator approved and recommended additional funding. And I ask each division to make the case. If they want to increase spending on a specific item or project resource, they have to justify it. And we have quite a few, and, and I, I look at this as we've been putting money back into the, the general fund for several years now. And we also, in many cases, have a history of kicking things down the road, waiting to repair, waiting to buy the software that's needed or upgrading. And so we use this, you know, when they justified it, we made the decision to go ahead and add these extra things to the budget, which accounts for about 1.36 billion. The next page.
Here you want to know.
Okay, that is which book? Page eight? Yes, that's page eight, Chad. Are, are you guys asking what page in your book?
Yeah.
This, this would be page 54 in your book.
The big page number or the fifth?
Fifty-four of 142. At the bottom, you'll see that I've got them all. The previous one was 53, 142. Those are the 53 are the ones that have been approved. Fifty-four are things that I did not approve, but I thought certainly they're worthy for consideration. And these are the types of things that you all as a board, you know, many times can say, hey, you know what? I think this one is good, or no, I agree. I will point out, you know, you say, boy, 1.5 million, 1.1 of that is replacing a failing microwave radio.
Make sure that they know what page you're on now for the ones you did put in the budget.
Yeah. Page 54.
Oh, the ones you didn't, the ones you did, is what they.
The ones that we did, that the administrator approved are page 53. What's on the screen before you, the administrator has recommended, the board evaluate, is page 54.
Okay.
So you look at the one point, at the bottom of page 54, the last one is replacing failing microwave radio. So you look at the one point, at the bottom of page 54, the last one is replacing failing microwave radios. That's one of those that's like, yeah, we're going to have to do. Question is, if we need to do it this year, next year, whatever. Uh, this is one that I, I put on here because I think it's something we could fund it in those sources that I had mentioned earlier, general fund, ARPA, uh, asset protection fund. Uh, and, you know, but that's something that you all can decide. If you say, you know what, that's something we want to do, then we can decide how do we want to fund it.
Just sit around for a second. This is the small numbers, 53, 142 in the year packet, and 54 in the small numbers. The large number would be in the packet, 67 and 68.
Sorry, I didn't know which, I'm sorry, I didn't know there was a second number inside.
In the packet, it came up. So there are other, um, other copies of the budget. I think we're straight now, I'm sorry.
So as you go down there and look at those items, what I would recommend is, if, you know, if you look at which one of those apply maybe to your committee, land and water, law enforcement, parks and trails. You can discuss that in the committees and say, is this something that we think is a priority that we would recommend or not? Discuss it. Then make that recommendation for an amendment or to add it, roll that up through general government, and then present it at the final board.
Now, this has to be done, though, this month, right?
Yes.
So it's, I mean, some committees have two committees.
Before November 9th. Before November.
But that's, that's, it's like, we only have one meeting. Executive only has one meeting. Environmental Services, you guys have two this month. Health has one. Just. Say, or we have to do it the night of the county board meeting. If we don't do it through committees and general government, it's still make an amendment the night of the county board meeting when we approve it too.
The reason we got this out earlier, you can certainly do that. The reason we got this out earlier this year than last year, and I don't, Chad, his staff worked extremely hard to get it out here, is to allow you all to have, have it in your hands and look at it, consider it, so that you can then discuss it in your committees. Because it's awfully hard on the budget process when you go and do it. I mean, it can be done, it has been.
We don't want to do it.
Yeah.
Want to get information on any of this, like, say, the tower. Kind of needs, is that, I mean, to law enforcement, is it something they need? I mean, do they have dead spots? Do they have olluses? Is it something you should look at seriously?
Well, and, and that is an example. Now, the sheriff is here now, and Chad's familiar with it, and I've been briefed on it. That's also something that, that they could discuss in detail to public safety and public work. Uh, but.
It's on their agenda.
Yeah. So. Or the budget will be on their agenda.
I didn't see it on their agenda, but I, so that the rest of us could see some information on, on any of these.
Right, and we can answer the question.
So we can ask whoever, kind of, or whatever, all right, so that we can get some information.
And so typically, the way that would work is on each committee's agenda, because we actually did the additional funding request. Is we have the, the budget and amendments on each agenda, and then they would go, so a committee would make a recommendation, just like general government made a recommendation on the trails, and then you guys got hit because they just did it. So if public safety made a recommendation on the towers, then it would go to general government. Public safety will get detailed information, general government will get turn level. We can always in November, you know, say, okay, what's the detail on this?
Tim, for example, that's why we moved the health and human services up from the ninth.
So, right, information on some of these things. So it's a mess.
But you see that ahead of time, as it is.
Now, to, just to wrap this portion up, the, the rest of that budget book is really a breakdown by department and the specifics. And what we've added this year, and Chad spearheaded a lot of this, is not only are we looking at much money they're requesting, we're asking for what programs that their, the money's going to be used for, what their FTEs are, and what metrics they're measuring. What that allows us to do is every year, as people come forward, we could, you know, as time goes by, we'll say, wait a minute, here have been your metrics over the past several years. Are you hitting them? Going to keep asking for more money, tell me where you are on the metrics. So it just throws in a little more accountability. You can take a look at that to see how, uh, the different departments are, are monitoring their progress.
All right. So everyone knows, contact staff on the committee. Do we have any, any other questions, or do you want to make a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole?
A moment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, we're on number 18. Is there anything needed to act on that, uh, from the committee of the whole? Not aware of anything, right? We move, uh, 518. Action of possible action of agenda items, standing committee agenda items, and proposed resolutions, ordinances acted on by standing committee. This is all general government. For 1919A Resolution 5121, resolution to authorize the representative for filing recycling grant applications. Do we have a, uh, do we have a motion to bring that to the floor? There was seconded by Dotson. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
To the floor.
Huh?
Just to bring it to the floor.
Yeah, Supervisor O'Connell, I know you have a question about this.
Well, for rules of order and stuff, just explain why it's not in the right form.
Right.
As our rules of order, because there's no signatures and there's nobody says they reviewed it or anything.
Oh, Su, uh, Maria, could you explain the fact that we're not following the same format on our other resolutions?
Right, it was the format that was presented by the state agency, and so it was my recommendation that we use their format and, and not try to impose our format. That's the only reason.
Was it reviewed? That, I mean, we don't have the checklist if it was reviewed.
It was circulated and reviewed, yes.
And who's presenting it? Probably the administrator then, or?
Um, is that from you, Vince?
Yeah.
Okay. No one has a clue what it is, Tim.
It's something we got to do, and it's simply changing from Mo Norby to Division Director of, yeah.
It's a title instead of a name of a person. That's all it is.
Because it's in the budget that they can do it anyway.
Is there any other discussion on that? Be in none, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign? Carried. 19B Resolution 52-21, resolution calling for public hearing on the proposed 2022 operating and capital improvement budget. Do you have a motion? Second. Any other discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, everybody by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, carried. 19C Resolution 54-21, resolution to make capital improvements. Hope County Recycling Center using ARPA funds. Do we have a motion to bring that to the floor? Second, uh, further discussion. Supervisor Middleton signed this. Would you explain this one for us?
Uh, not Supervisor Middleton.
Oh, sorry, Supervisor Dotson.
But, but, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Apologize. I got, I got someone else's name wrong last month every time.
So, okay, so one of the things, ever since I've been on the county board. Sorry about that. So one of the things that, um, has been a main issue, ever since I've been on the county board, is the future of the recycling center and kicking that can down the road. Um, there's been, uh, public statements made by supervisors that they want to close it. They think that privatizing will, don't agree with that. Um, I sought the advice of county leadership, emails, uh, to how to bring this forth, how to bring this forth. After we had the study done by Flock, I don't know if all of you have seen the study that was done or not, but you can read the resolution where I referenced the study, uh, that was done. And what the cost would be to our, uh, citizens moving forward on recycling, shutting it down, where it would become privatized, or the county making the capital. The project. Um, I was advised that there were two ways to bring this forth, to bring it forth either as a resolution for budget amendment or to bring it forth as a resolution to use ARPA funds. Um, this was discussed at JNC in September. And at that time, the, uh, committee members had asked if I had a resolution. They want to see a resolution. I said, well, I don't have it with me, but I'll bring it forth next month. So that is, um, my. So, um, there has been some opinions expressed to me that I'm not following a process or I'm jumping ahead of the process. So I have seen other supervisors jump ahead in processes. For example, the, the monies for the Salmone. I've seen, um, you know, we had discussion at JNC about even kind of joking about jumping ahead in the process, um, the funding of the trails. How that would be funded. So I, my intent was to follow the advice, county staff, on how to bring this forth, and that's what I've done. Now, I've made my case crystal clear on why I believe we should support making the capital improvements to the recycling center. I'm not going to hammer it again. I've done it, and I've done it several times. Now, there is, um, hanging out there, a potential proposal from private entity, Republic, I believe, of what they may or may not be able to do with the recycling center. Last spring, Republic gave us a proposal, uh, for recycling services. And at that time, um, Mo briefly touched on that proposal with our committee. We didn't get a copy of that proposal at that time. Um, Mo touched on it. We didn't even get a copy of it because it was so unreasonably expensive and did not meet the county's needs. So I don't know, um, how they're going to wave a magic wand and make all of that go away. Um, you know, if they have anything new to propose, we haven't gotten a proposal from them yet. So we don't know that. As far as I'm concerned, it's a point, they had a crack at it. They didn't bring anything viable forward, uh, for us to work with. My intent is let's quit kicking the can down the road. Everybody's been complaining about that for years. Let's just address it.
All right, so we're, we're good. So do you want to understand what the resolution is? Supervisor, can you, you're the chair of the committee. How was it voted out of committee?
Um, it failed in the committee freedom to.
So, uh, discussion, we're in discussion mode. Supervisor O'Connell.
No, it fails to meet our rules of order. We need an amount. We can't just say, I'm looking at the last, therefore, there's no amount. If there's an amount, it would make sense. But we have no mouth, and the fiscal impact is what we need. And then I would, I would be for this, but I can't now, not knowing the amount. It could be, it says a reasonable full amount of money. What is reasonable? Eight million, 10 million, 15 million?
The ARPA bucket does have a number.
The ARPA bucket has 4 million, so all of it goes here?
No, it has 1.5.
A point of order.
Uh, we can't have a private conversation, okay? A lot of amount of time addresses the body.
So I'm, okay, so mine is bad reason that there's no money allocated, so the fiscal impact hasn't been. No, that's part of our rules of order. So I'm thinking that, that part, we need an amount. We can't open, or an open check.
All right, anyone else have comments about the resolution, Supervisor Ronnie?
Uh, this basic issue has been on the board since I got on the board six years ago. And at first, there was a discussion of they needed a new person. So instead of getting it on the building's budget at that time, it's just put off, and put off, and put off. We started at, I think it was 1,500,000. Now it's one and a half million. You know, it's just crept up and crept up with all the costs of everything that we're doing. I just hate to see this just let go again. It, it needs to be, they did us, we had a study. And at that time, they showed that it was cheaper to have the recycling center for the citizens of Hope County than to have a private person come in and do it. And then they want to push it off onto the town. Well, the town of Bone Lake, where we're going to put this uh, recycling center bin, and it won't be full of garbage. It's just the way it works. I mean, out in the country, it's going to sit without anyone seeing it, and you got, I don't know. But we've just got to do something. That's what I feel.
Joe?
Oh. Thing that I've been seeing all along, I've been getting a lot of calls from the elderly. And to me, I think it's the responsibility of this board to take care of the people of Hope County. And the recycling center is number one, in my book. Because the other one, the other older people are saying, how am I going to pay for the privatizing? So.
Yep, so maybe, maybe another adjustment would be from Mo. I mean, is there any, is there any plans right now to privatize the recycling center? Or can you give us an update on the Republic? I hear privatizing. All this is, where are we at with everything with the recycling center and the ordinance and what we're doing?
We just updated the ordinance. We wrote the ordinance. We've not had ordinance. The Republic, we meet Thursday, um, afternoon with Republic to get their proposal on how they could handle a drop-in. Um, that are different county locations. What that proposal is going to look like, that I don't know. That, and right now, that's where we're at.
Is there, is there anything right now currently moving this to privatizing the current facility?
The only thing we're waiting on is to see what Republic brings.
Sure. So we, that's just pending. Right, Supervisor Kelly has an answer.
I, I agree. I, I think we need to have numbers in here. I, I don't think it can just be an open-handed. I, I agree that something needs to be done, but I think we need to have, before we pass the resolution, we need that information to understand what, what the actual proposal.
Um, let's get everyone done. Supervisor Wondell?
Uh, well, we know what it's going to cost.
Now, do we, do we know?
We have a dollar run. This, this study, uh, was, um, 1.1 to 1.62 million. Right. To do the new baler and to do the modifications, the building and everything. So there is a number.
But it's not in here. It's not in here.
Point of order, point of order. Supervisor Wondell is talking. Uh, doesn't mean we can't put it in there right now. Get this thing done. Okay, you know, we have, we have, um, who else had their, uh, hand up? Um, Mike, you haven't asked a question.
I'll, I'll make a motion if we.
Before we make a motion, Supervisor O'Connell has a question. I'd like to get through all the questions, but we will allow you to make a motion here. Let's just get through all the questions.
I'm not against it. I just say we need the numbers, but if we have that study, we have that somewhere that we can see it and, and put those numbers in here. That, that's a huge thing.
The study cost, uh, we had the top number was 1.6.
Right? Supervisor Olson?
I'm not against it. We just need to realize that it's 1.62 million that disappears from every other project.
I'm not against it, we just need to realize that it's one point six two million that disappears from every other project. When we, when we go to committees next month, we don't have four million dollars to spend, we've got two point three eight. That's, that's what's going to be left on the table. I'm, I'm not against it, I'm just saying.
Is this, is this resolution specific?
It's gone.
This is saying it's for ARPA funds, so instead of putting in the ARPA bucket right now, if you're, you're proposing that the resolution will grab the ARPA funds now and designate them for, towards the recycling center.
That's what I was advised by staff.
Is it specific, does everyone understand?
Right now, it's the same thing.
Well, no, it's not the same thing, Chad, right? They're different funds.
Well, I mean, the ARPA money is an assigned portion of the fund balance, because it has to be used for ARPA.
Right. So they are two different budgets, so like Supervisor Olson said, if we use it for ARPA now, whatever ARPA, you got, how much ARPA funds do you have?
Four point two three.
So, that money you would end up taking out of there and putting in designated fund towards the recycling center?
Right, and we would report that as being allocated.
Can I ask Malia a question?
Yes, you can.
Malia, are you there?
I am here.
Yeah.
Yes, I am.
Would it, would it be appropriate, like, for, uh, if, uh, Mo said, uh, that the study was up on one point, up to one point six two million, we would, uh, have that figure in up to that if somebody wanted to make a, if you wanted to make a resolution? That would be appropriate?
Yes, there hasn't. That, that would be appropriate, there has not yet been a motion to approve the resolution, so it wouldn't need to be an amendment, it would just be.
Talking about it all yet. Sharon?
How much? And the new budget for recycling stuff. Where I saw some.
We had, we had some construction doors, capital improvements. All right, hold on, we're going to just one person talk at a time. Tell you real quick. For the recycling center, we have hundred and thirty thousand. Hundred and thirty thousand per CIP on the building now.
Well, that's for the additional funding request for board consideration.
For board consideration.
Yep.
Supervisor Olson?
Would that hundred and thirty thousand be part of the one point six in the big picture? Question from Al, I'm not sure.
Truck. So, it's, it's the purchase of the Gaylord's, the overhead doors, and then the big haul truck. The haul truck is ninety. Pretty, haul trucks, and then the Gaylord. Small roll-around bins. Yeah, is that part of the study? That part of the total cost of the study?
Study.
Okay.
My questions that I have, and while we're talking about this, and it goes to what we talked earlier, you know, there's no way the county's going to spend one point six million dollars in one year on this facility, right? So how do you carry that money over year after year, Chad? You have to redo it every year, and the board has an opportunity to change their plans again?
Correct.
Okay, so it's, it's handled the same way?
It's handled the same way.
Sure. So if things change, or if it's not enough, or if it's too much, the board's going to come back and look at plans and ideas?
Yeah, and as, as a reminder, ARPA designation has to be made by twenty twenty-four, and the funds have to be expended by twenty twenty-four.
Sure. You're going to make, are you getting ready to make a motion? Hey, we're, I just want to make sure there's no more questions, does anyone have any more questions?
I don't know, if I had to go back and re-rank everything, I think I'd put this recycling center on top.
Sure.
It's been such a sour issue, you get calls all the time on it.
Yep.
Why wouldn't you take this money and just get it done? You know, the whole thing, not, not rob him of his trucks and doors and things that he needs that he's been looking for for years.
That's all in there.
Well, no matter.
Yeah.
What's it going to cost to do it, just designate the funds? Get it done.
That's what we wanted to hear tonight from the board. Everyone's, is everyone done asking questions about the resolution, do you think? Sounds like it. Hey, Mike, you want to make a, uh, motion to make an amendment?
I would move to amend resolution fifty-four twenty-one by adding line thirty-seven in the now therefore clause. Supervisors commit, the board supervisors commits to using up to one point six two million dollars of ARPA funds, et cetera.
Everyone, we got a second on that from Jay?
Just to be clear, Mr. Chair, there has not been a motion to approve the resolution, so I believe that Supervisor Pritchard's request to amend should simply be made to state, to approve the resolution with the following amendment. So you're adding the original resolution and the amendment in one motion?
I thought we were voting separately on the amendment, that's why I made it that way.
Well, he's, he's making it as a separate amendment to see whether it passes. Do you have a?
And he can only do that once there's been a first and a second to approve the underlying resolution on its own.
We can, we can make, we can make a first and a second.
To bring it to the floor.
Okay. So Mike, would you be fine with the way Corporation Council recommended the motion be put together?
I, I, if it's preferred, uh, I, I guess, would, would I change the emotion to, the motion to approve resolution?
Yes, with this amendment, that's the way your motion.
Fifty-four twenty-one with
Yes.
The amendment to line thirty-seven to provide, the Board of Supervised commits to using up to one point six two million dollars of ARPA funds, et cetera.
Sure. Still second. Okay, Jay?
Voice vote?
Uh, voice vote? Okay, voice vote, so that means you want to just, uh,
Roll call.
Roll call, is that what you're saying, Chad?
No, I, I think just a voice.
Just a voice vote. Okay, yeah, that's.
Getting late.
Has anyone asked for a roll call? Okay, all in favor of that, say it by saying aye?
Aye.
Proposed? Carried? There you go.
So, I just have a technical question. The way the resolution is now, does the board want me to move the money into an account line for recycling center effective with the twenty twenty-one budget? Or do we move, does, is the board instructing me to include it in the administrator's budget for twenty twenty-two?
If we did it for twenty twenty-one, we have a million seven.
Yeah, if you do it this year, you're going to have to do a carryover resolution.
Go, go next year.
Okay, all right.
Maybe if that gets started before that, though, I mean, like if the doors, something like that.
It was aesthetic, they, Mo didn't have a problem with waiting till the budget was done to do the doors and stuff.
Under the number drop of study, we're going to.
The numbers may not be right. They're a guess.
I'm going to go through our, get our board to get what's actually in the bills of.
And that'll go back to the general government, so Fran, you'll be watching that process.
It just makes sense.
Supervisors announcements? Man?
Yeah, I would like to, um, just announce I attended the meeting of our now memorial community society, and they are recruiting for the top two positions at the shelter, uh, for the shelter director and the top lead position, uh, for the, uh, the animal care. So, need to get the word out there that this is a really tough job to fill, so if you know anyone who's interested, the ads to apply will be coming out in probably a couple of weeks. Uh, the current shelter director, Mary Ruckner, has been there for twenty years.
Ever.
And she is retiring at the end of December, um, those are going to be big shoes to fill.
Any other announcements? Be in none, do we got a motion to? Joe, what do you want to, you want, hey, John, you got an announcement, I know you've been doing.
Joe, I've got to get you to the board quick, uh, Joe and Sharon and I went to the convention in.
Thank you guys for doing that.
And, uh, I sat in on three committees. The thing that I think Sharon and I, Joe took home, but was something that really woke me up, if that's possible, that the, uh, the broadband is getting so filthy rich, and they really aren't hooking up anybody. And this was a, and Sharon, you can tell of some roads where there's nobody living on, and they're getting paid.
With, there's work to do with broadband. The way the government works on this is crazy. I mean, they measure it by census district, in one home, and a census district has twenty-five, whatever, speed for broad, for their internet, that's considered broadband, and the whole area then is blocked off as having broadband.
They're not hooking up anybody.
Any other announcements? Oh, yes, we're tapped one.
So, I just wanted to let everybody know, um, that the packets for candidacy paperwork for the spring election, they have been pulled together. Um, it's too early to get any signatures, that can't start till the first, but, um, notification of non-candidacy, not interested in running, that filed as well. Um, you know, public, those that they may be interested in running, we have those. Yeah, I was just going to say, one more, as the filing officers, please contact your office if you have any questions about filling out the forms, but we cannot fill out the documents for you or make any corrections to the form. I just want to know about that.
Make a motion to. No, we got one more, no, sorry, Joe.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to have surgery tomorrow, and I want to ask for your prayers, you're all like a family, appreciate it.
Good luck on that, John. Hey, we got a motion to adjourn, Joe? You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.